You got this? Or you want me to do this?
Oh, it was sitting there, so yeah, I could do it.
Okay. I'll do it for you. You take off.
Good evening. We're reconvening Salem Kaiser School District's Board Meeting for this evening. Would you all please join me for the pledge?
And I'm going to do one announcement. We have an interpreter here tonight, a sign language interpreter. She'll be here for the first 30 minutes. And if we see that we have somebody that needs a service, she'll remain through the full evening. So if we can help watch and then we'll stand for the flag salute.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board attendance tonight. Everyone's here except Chuck Lee. Chuck Lee, Director Lee will be on the phone this evening, so he'll be following what's going on. Agenda modifications, we have one.
Excuse me, so we are going to move up the preschool report right after Spotlights on Success.
Excuse me, Chair Goss, this is Chuck Lee. I am on the phone.
Thank you, Chuck. You sound kind of froggy, though. We'll go on with the spotlights for tonight, Superintendent.
All right, good evening. Our first spotlight will be presented by Jim Orth, our interim Assistant Superintendent.
Are there any students from McNary that came? Come on up. Any of the administrators? Oh, Suzanne's here? Great, come on up. The Inspire, right over there by the Board Chair and Superintendent? Yes, awesome, thank you. Audience, CTE teacher. The Inspire Foundation and Salem Kaiser Public Schools are pleased to be partners in a monthly recognition of career technical education students who demonstrate professional skills. Called Professionals of the Month, students in all 47 CTE programs across the district and at CTEC are singled out by their teachers each month for demonstrating professional skills employers value. Last week, students in McNary High School's five CTE programs were recognized as Professionals of the Month for February at their school. Those students are Madison Alt in Business Administration, Nathan Frazier in Graphic Design, Kate Bomar in Media Productions, James Redding in Auto Tech, and Brady Jackson in Culinary. McNary Assistant Principal Suzanne Stefani, Chris Phipps representing the Inspire Foundation, and Adriana Morales with the CTE program visited each classroom with a certificate of recognition and $50 gift cards for each student selected by their teacher as a Professional of the Month. Before the presentation, teachers explained to the entire class why they picked the student who got the award. For example, in teacher Mike Melting's automotive class, thank you for coming, Mike, he explained that student James Redding always shows up before the start bell each day, communicates with everyone in a respectful manner, always completes his assigned work, helps others, and is ready to be a professional in our society regardless of the path he chooses. Congratulations to all students at all of the 47 CTE classrooms across our district and at CTEC who are recognized in February by their teachers as CTE Professional of the Month.
One more picture. Wait, everyone look that way, one more picture.
Our next spotlight will be presented by Olga Cobb, our Director of Elementary Education.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing you to Elena. And Elena actually brought some posters that she wants to pass out after we tell you about her. Elena is a fifth grader at Forest Ridge Elementary. Oregon's Kid Governor is a statewide civics program for fifth graders managed by the Oregon Secretary of State. Each year, fifth graders from across Oregon develop their leadership skills by picking a topic they care about and creating a campaign video and a three-point plan to address the issue. After that, a selection committee looks at all the entries and selects the seven most impressive submissions. This year, Elena, a fifth grader at Forest Ridge Elementary, was chosen as one of seven Kid Governors 2019 finalists for her campaign on stranger danger. Elena developed an acronym, CHINE, an important and easy word that kids can remember that means S, stranger danger, H, helpers to trust,
Thank you.
I, internet awareness, N, know your numbers, E, everybody in a group. In her campaign video, Elena explains how remembering CHINE can help keep kids safe. Her three-point plan expands on that. We will post Elena's video on the homepage of the district website tomorrow so everyone can see it. As one of the seven Kid Governor finalists, Elena got to visit the Oregon State Capitol and meet Governor Brown. That was a huge honor. Congratulations, Elena, for being selected one of the top seven Kid Governors finalists in the state of Oregon.
Our next spotlight will be presented by Director Larry Ramirez, our Director of High Schools.
Principal Tiven, Mason, Julianette, if you can come forward. We also have Warren. Mr. Warren Trotter also. Last spring, there was a harmful algae bloom at Detroit Lake, which impacted the drinking water in Salem and surrounding communities. City leaders tested the water daily for several weeks and updated the community on the water's toxicity. The problem inspired South Salem High School juniors Mason O'Brady, Julie Chan, and Ned Harlan to team up to find a new way to quickly identify harmful algae blooms that could impact Salem's water source. The students came up with the idea of using a drone and artificial intelligence to analyze photos to find harmful algae blooms. Mason, Julie, and Ned hit on this idea after they decided to enter the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow contest. Their drone project earned them first place in Oregon along with the Samsung Video Kit and $20,000 in technology for South Salem. They are now working on a three-minute video showcasing their project that they did in Busch Park where a drone flew over a plastic swimming pool containing water with algae crushed pellets mixed in. The drone took pictures and the AI algorithm analyzed the photos. Teacher Warren Trotter says the video will be submitted this week and the team will find out at the end of the month whether they make it to the top 10 in advance to the national competition in Washington DC. Mr. Trotter said if the students earn in the top three in Washington DC, they would win a total of $100,000 in technology for South Salem High School. Congratulations, Mason, Julie, and Ned, on your success so far, and good luck at Nationals.
And we have one more spotlight that will be presented by Director Ramirez.
Coach Herbert. Principal Miller. Any other West Salem supporters, please come forward. Okay, that's it. Tonight, we are proud to recognize West Salem High School Track and Field Coach Eric Herbert, who was named the National Federation State High School Association Northwest Coach of the Year. The award singles out the top high school track and field coach in Alaska, Idaho, Montana, Oregon, and Washington. Coach Herbert has had a distinguished career coaching high school students in our district. One of the highlights includes winning the 2018 6A Boy State Championship, the first-team title in any sport for the Titans. Coach Herbert has been the head track and field coach at West Salem for the past 14 years. Prior to that, he was an assistant for the Titans for two years and also an assistant at South Salem previous to that for six years. West Salem Athletic Director Bill Whitman says that Coach Herbert is a teacher at Walker Middle School and does a great job of recruiting students into his track and field program. He said Coach Herbert and his students do a lot of volunteer work, like helping with the three-on-three hoopla tournament every year at the State Capitol. Mr. Whitman also said that Coach Herbert knows he can't do it all on his own, so he hires the best team of assistants around and built an awesome coaching staff. Congratulations, Coach Herbert, on being named Northwest Coach of the Year, and thank you for your leadership in helping students work as a team to reach their potential.
Okay, we're ready now for the preschool report that was moved earlier up on your agenda.
All right, we're going to bring on up Stephanie Wetzel, who brought some preschool parents with her. And one of the reasons for moving them up on the agenda is they might have some young children with them as well. So this is Stephanie Wetzel, our preschool coordinator.
So, good evening Superintendent Perry and members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight and present our annual Head Start Report. I just wanted to share a little bit of information, and I believe you have a copy of the board report in front of you. Before I begin, I just wanted to recognize a few of our Head Start parents that are here and thank them for coming. They're members of our Head Start Policy Council, so thank them. So we'll go ahead and see if we can get it to move forward here. I'll just tell you a little bit about our program. So the report in front of you is specific to Head Start, but although this is specific to Head Start, we do have a variety of programs, early childhood programs in our district. So we have six different preschool programs serving, as of today, 960 students in 36 classrooms throughout the district, and we have 180 staff members with our early childhood programs. In our report, we did a little bit of a data spotlight that looks at the kindergarten assessment scores. So looking at assessment scores for students who were incoming into kindergarten with the Oregon Kindergarten Assessment. And then what we did was highlighted just a couple of schools there, and you could see students at the bottom who were enrolled in our Salem Kaiser Early Childhood Programs, how they did on the Oregon Kindergarten Assessment, and then related to their peers. So the top numbers look at students enrolled in entering kindergarten at those schools, and then the bottom number looks at, for that school, students who were enrolled in our preschool programs. So you can see just the difference that it's showing for that kindergarten entry with students who are having early childhood programs. Just, we wanted to highlight again the work that our programs are doing around equity, access, and inclusion. So we continue to provide training for all of our staff members. Our programs work closely with our Salem Kaiser Office of Equity to provide support and training for staff. We are providing translation support, getting parent feedback, and continuing to look at ways we can improve services. If we think about our goals for our programs, we want all of our students to leave and be ready for kindergarten entry in a successful K-12 experience. So that's kind of our overall goal. A couple of our specific goals this year are to reduce our number of students who are chronically absent. We are working with our Salem Kaiser Attendance Campaign and building parent awareness around that importance of attendance. We also are targeting some specific areas around social, emotional, and self-regulation, and ability for kids to be able to control that, and have some planned professional development around that. We also have worked on hiring an instructional support assistant or someone who's in our behavior cadre, who's able to provide support for our early childhood programs. And just kind of wrapping up, we want to continue to look for funding to allow for expanded enrollment, but then again, that looks at also funding and facility space, so that continues to be a goal of ours, and expanding supports and parental supports and resources that are available. This year, we've started a partnership with Marion County Mental Health to provide onsite parent education services for parents enrolled in our preschool program. With that, I wanted to turn it over to Eric Schreckengost, who's our Policy Council Chair, and he just wants to tell you a little bit about his experience with our Head Start program.
Good evening Superintendent Perry and members of the board. My name is Eric Schreckengost, and I have the honor to serve as Chair of the Salem Kaiser Head Start Parent Policy Council. I would like to tell you a little of my family's story and the role Head Start plays in it. I applied to enroll my daughter Aria last summer in the wake of my family's life being turned to rubble. My marriage failed, our home lost, my older two children struggling to deal with their past trauma, and all three adjusting to the new reality of our broken family. I was faced with the responsibility to guide my children into the next phase of our lives with a level of difficulty higher than I ever expected. How was I to meet the needs of three high-needs children by myself? For Aria, a big part of that answer was and still is Head Start. I always knew that preschool was going to be integral to preparing my little girl for her future education, from kindergarten and beyond. What I didn't expect was the whole-family approach the program would take. From the first meeting with our family advocate, I was floored and so grateful for the concern and help I received in navigating resources to aid us in our journey to stability and self-sufficiency. Aria was the focal point, but the importance of the rest of us to her success was never ignored. Aria's rapidly developing and thriving in spite of my limited time and resources, due in no small part to the care and effort of her teachers. The feedback and reminders I get from the program help me keep her up on her physical, emotional, and mental well-being to a degree I may not have maintained on my own. Though, through Head Start, I feel I have an engaged compassionate community at my back, and I no longer feel alone. Thanks to Salem Kaiser Head Start, I believe that the future looks quite a bit brighter for my family, and the only damper on that feeling is my concern for those still left on their own. As of our last council meeting, we have 122 children still on the waiting list for a chance at a brighter future. An uncomfortable number of these children are going to be thrown into kindergarten with little to no preparation at all, and the effects of that will follow them and their peers for the rest of their school careers. So I both thank you for your support of this vital program and implore you to prioritize maintaining and expanding Head Start with the goal of serving every family at risk in our community. None of us can truly succeed until we are all freed from the inequality of opportunity. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you to Eric, but just wondering if anyone had any questions or any information that I can get. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thanks for your board.
The next part of our agenda is a time for public comment, and the comment in this section is for items, for commenting on items that are on the agenda. And then there will be another section later in the program for speaking to items that are not on the agenda. We would please like the speaker to speak for three minutes or less, and the timer will bleep when your time has expired. And your timer is up here on the wall. So there are so many people today, we want to make sure everyone has a chance.
Now I'm going to make one comment, too. When we have a few of our Spanish-speaking families, we will have an interpreter by their side, and we may go slightly over the three minutes for those families because we also have the interpretation going on. And then one last check to see if we have anyone in the audience in need of the sign language. All right, do you want to get started then with our first?
Adriana first. First on the list is Adriana Miranda, and Rita Glass will follow her.
How about we, I don't see her yet, so let's go ahead and start with Rita then.
Good evening, Chair Goss, Vice Chair Blassey, Superintendent Perry, and the members of the board. I am Rita Glass, ASKEESP President, and I am speaking on Agenda Item 6F. A resolution in support of adequate state funding for education. This resolution was a joint effort between SKEA, ASKEESP, Salem Kaiser Association of School Administrators, and the Salem Kaiser School Board. The language was very thoughtful and represents our district's uniqueness. It is student-focused, as we call upon the governor and Oregon Legislature to ensure stable and adequate funding every year, to ensure consistency and improved education outcomes for all students. If this resolution changes as additional language, it will not remain student-focused and lose its intended impact. ASKEESP asks you to approve this resolution as originally submitted in being the voice for the schools our students and community deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tyler. Boy, you have a long name, Tyler. I'll really foul this up, I'm afraid. Salo Lakberg?
Yes.
Ah, there you are.
Good evening.
One moment. So we were asked if you would say the name of whatever you're speaking on first and then start. Thank you.
I'll be speaking regarding this funding resolution. Okay, good evening. Board Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. My name is Tyler Skello Lakberg, and I reside in Salem, Oregon. Tonight, I'm speaking to you as a Vice President of the Salem Kaiser Education Association on behalf of my 2,300 members in this district. Before you tonight, you have a resolution regarding funding for our schools. This resolution was a collaborative effort written by school board members, the Association of, excuse me, Administrators, the ASK, which is our Association of Salem Kaiser Education and Support Professionals, and the Salem Kaiser Education Association. Now is the time to fund our schools. For too long, we have fought over the inadequate funding we've received. For too long, we have argued which priority is really a priority good enough to fund. For too long, we've had Band-Aid fixings for a larger problem of underfunding. Now is the time for this board to put pressure on our Oregon legislators to fund our schools so that our students have the education they deserve. This resolution focuses on the resources, and we support the language as written to support our students. Now is the time for our students to get the education they deserve. We believe every student has a right to have access to a counselor, and not just in a moment of crisis. We believe students have the right to school health nurses and other specialists. Now is the time for every student to be able to walk into a classroom and have a desk to sit at, to have a class size that is reasonable, that they can have a relationship and get to know their teacher, to have one-on-one time, to be more than a name on a very large seating chart. Now is the time that our students have access to art, music, and career planning within their schools. Now is the time for our state to step up and start funding the schools so our students get the education they deserve. Now is the time to stand with students. I ask this board to pass this resolution and join us as we publicly stand for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. We missed Adriana at first. If you're here now, will you come up? There she is.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Directors. My name's Adriana Miranda, and I live in northeast Salem. I come to you tonight as a parent of the Salem Kaiser School District and a co-chair of the Boundary Review Task Force. I want to address the article published by the Statesman Journal last week. It has come to my attention that community members have concerns regarding the recommendations that have been presented, and I believe wholeheartedly that those concerns are very valid, on the one hand. And on the other hand, I also believe that the work of the task force was very inclusive under the resources and time we were given. This is my community. I was raised here. I went to school here. And now my children are in school here, and I am intimately familiar with the disparities in our community. The Boundary Review Task Force was made up of over 40 passionate community volunteers that included teachers, parents, special education, the NAACP, and the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. As a co-chair, one of my personal goals was to ensure that everyone's voice was heard equitably. That means encouraging the people whose voices have been overrepresented to step back and to intentionally design our outreach and engagement efforts in a way that made sure underrepresented voices were brought in. The district listened and allowed us to slow down the process to ensure this happened. Our public engagement process consisted of a focus group with over 20 parents at Four Corners Elementary School, listening sessions across our district, which were held at four locations. Childcare snacks and the presentations were bilingual, which made it easier for busy working families to attend and participate. I believe it was important for our district to meet our community where they are at. By doing this, it allowed us to intentionally engage our historically underserved and underrepresented communities to ensure our proposal reflected their voices. The task force reviewed current enrollment, population projections, and additional capacity that comes in five years with the completion of the bond program. We developed a proposal that allows families to be there for their children after school. Our proposal ensures that families who don't have transportation don't have to ride an hour on a city bus to pick up a sick child at school. Our proposal supports neighborhood schools that are the hubs of their communities. The bond recently acknowledged the importance of equity by adopting an equity lens, and with this process, we had the opportunity to put that lens into practice. Our responsibility to Salem Kaiser families is not to merely have a lens, but to put that lens into practice, and we had the chance to walk our walk here, and it was personally important for me that we got this right. I'm thankful that the district brought in the community to shape the process, and this process was community-driven. Overall, people were concerned about change. The thought of change is difficult and emotional, and totally understandable that this is not easy for families. I'm almost done. I also heard concerns about continuity and ability of students to continue to progress through school with peers and siblings. One of the other concerns I heard was maintaining neighborhoods and walk zones, or the ability for students to walk to school. The Boundary Review Task Force listened to all of this, and the recommendations presented before you are reflective of every single one of those voices. The article that was released by the Statesman Journal does not cover any of this. Instead, with the headline that has no context, with the work we did, the coverage has misled and hurt the very members of our community we worked so diligently to represent. As a result of this misinformed article, many are claiming that our schools that primarily served communities of color are harmed. Not helped, and that's simply untrue. The proposal before you helps us reduce and stabilize enrollment over time. I don't disagree that there are systemic barriers for our communities of color. This is a greater conversation and one that is beyond a Boundary Task Force process. The notion of busing kids clear across town to address this in the name of inclusivity and diversity is not equitable. It perpetuates white privilege and tokenization. Our city absolutely needs to have a larger conversation about inclusionary zoning, but that's 100% outside the purview of our group of 40 community volunteers. I took a quick look on Craigslist for two-bedroom rental, and that tells the whole story. A family with a $1,000 monthly rental budget has only 15 options in South Salem. In northeast, there are 127 listings. This is a housing issue. We don't have enough affordable housing in south or west, and I cannot express that enough. There are without doubt many lessons to learn from this process. In order to have an impact on improving the disparities, in order to have an impact on improving the district's outcomes, particularly for communities of color and low-income communities, it's important that parents in the district be working together in close partnership. We can't accomplish everything we need to accomplish without mutual trust and accountability. The tough conversations that we had through this process and that we continue to have and the relationships that we are building will go a long way to build that trust. In closing, it matters to me that our schools be the very best that they can possibly be, and at the end of the day, this process was about making sure our children have everything they need to learn and thrive, and where they go to school plays a huge part. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adriana. The next person is Cole. The next person is Kaelin. Kaelin Hessel, please. And after Kaelin is Gabriella Ortiz. We're ready.
My name is Kaelin Hessel, and I will be speaking today on the Agenda Item 6B, the boundary changes. I urge you to vote no on the proposed boundary changes. The proposal before you perpetuates the racial and economic divides in our community. We've had 65 years to integrate our schools. It's time we finally did so. With the passage of the school bond, we are at an integral point in Salem's history. Do we continue to allow systemic racism and classism to flourish, or do we work to create a more equitable society? When the groups we form ourselves into are made up of people just like us, it can have a comforting familiarity, but that comfort imprisons us. It traps us from thinking in new ways and from truly understanding the world around us. Freeing ourselves from the bubbles we live in leads to innovation, understanding, and empathy. By surrounding ourselves with people who are different from us, we learn how to listen, how to see things differently, and how to better communicate our own ideas. It makes our world better. It makes each of us as individuals better. Under the proposed plan, four of our six high schools will be around 100% capacity in 2022. The two schools that are under capacity by double digits: Sprague and West Salem, the richest, whitest, best-performing schools. It's incomprehensible that when the boundaries are changed and hundreds of millions of dollars are poured into our schools, these disparities will still exist. Even though it will receive 11 more classrooms, new science labs, and new career tech spaces, Mckay will still be behind its sister schools. Mckay, North, and our students of color deserve more than this. They deserve to have their community support them in every way possible. Standing before you, I'm keenly aware of the privileges that helped me get where I am today. My education was full of challenging coursework, classrooms small enough that we all got individual attention, and teachers who taught me to think, to argue, and to have confidence in my opinions. I also would not be who I am today without the countless opportunities to befriend people who are different than me. They've taught me that life is full of differences, that there's more than one way to think, more than one answer to a problem, and more than one way of life. My hope is that our students of color will be able to have the same rigorous academics, support, and resources that I had, and that our white students have the opportunity to learn about the world and realize that what they've experienced in life doesn't apply to everyone. Part of the reason our society, our country, is hurting as badly as it is is because we're isolated into pockets of people like us. This can't continue. We won't be able to solve the problems of this world, of this community, if we aren't willing to draw upon our diversity, our strength. Nothing about this process has or will be easy, but what we have before the school board today isn't good enough. We, as a community, can and should do better. Please, send this proposal back to the task force and insist that they get more creative to end segregation and funding inequalities in our schools. Thank you.
And next is Gabriella Ortiz. And following Gabriella is Julio Covedo.
Buenas noches, miembros de la junta directiva y superintendente.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Chris Perry.
Mi nombre es Gabriella Ortiz.
My name is Gabriella Ortiz.
Soy madre de niños en el distrito.
I'm mother of students on Salem Kaiser School District.
Esta es la primera vez...
This is the first time.
...que me atrevo a venir a hablar con ustedes.
That I'm going to be here to talk to you.
Pero es muy importante que utilice mi voz.
But it's very important that I use my voice.
Para hablar por mis hijos.
To talk for my kids.
Y mi comunidad.
And my community.
Siempre creí que ustedes...
I always thought that you guys...
No estaban interesados...
Were not interested.
...en escucharme.
And listen to me.
Pero ahora...
But now...
Sé que sí les importa nuestras familias.
I know that you care about our families.
Y quieren apoyar mis sueños.
And you want to support my dreams.
Para mis hijos.
For my kids.
La propuesta del comité...
The proposal, the committee proposal.
De límites escolares.
The boundaries, the school boundaries.
Cumple las necesidades...
Addresses the necessities.
De mis hijos.
Of my kids.
Y de la comunidad.
And the community.
A la que pertenezco.
From which we belong to.
Y les garantiza que siempre...
And it assures...
Estemos en las escuelas en las que vivimos.
That always, we always remind at the school we live, at the neighborhood the school we live.
Nosotros no queremos que lleven...
We don't want...
Nosotros no queremos que nos lleven en autobuses escolares.
We don't want to be taken by school buses.
A otros vecindarios.
To other neighborhoods.
A los que no pertenecemos.
What we don't belong to.
Por favor...
Please.
Voten para aprobar la propuesta.
Vote to support the proposal.
Esta noche.
Tonight.
Y escuchen nuestras voces.
And please listen to our voices.
Por favor.
Please. Thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you for coming very much.
Hello. This is very nerve-wracking, actually. So, my name is Julio Covedo. I'm here, I'm one of the parents of kids that go to Four Corners Elementary. So, I'm here to talk to you guys about the boundary recommendation that you guys are proposing anyways. So, obviously, Four Corners is one of the feeder schools that, by your proposal, would go to North Salem High School or South Salem. And, you know, I was, I'm okay with that. But after reading the article about going to Sprague High School, it actually made me laugh, because I didn't think you guys were serious, but it sounds like you guys are serious. And obviously, I'm not okay with that, especially, you know, by the fact that in the article it talked about being bused, you know, as the token brown kids, because I'm Mexican, to one of, you know, those schools. Obviously, many issues. Distance, you know. I hate commuting. I hate my kids to be commuting to a school that's so far away. After-school activities is an issue. You know, some parents don't even drive. I was raised in a family that my mom didn't drive, so if I needed to get to school, I got very familiar with my bike and the bus. Parent involvement is going to be an issue, because you have communities that are not the same. Social-economic differences, it's obvious, right? Because that's kind of why you guys want to merge those schools together, or, you know, communities. When I was a kid, I used to, we were poor, so I wanted to be one of the cool kids. And what I would do is, I didn't know this, but apparently Adidas, if you guys know Adidas, there's three marks on the Adidas shoes. I used to get the ones with four marks. Okay? You're going to have that issue in schools. And I don't know if you guys know this, but kids are mean. Kids are mean, and they will make fun of you, and that is a big issue. If you're trying to bring a kid's morals up, you know. Language, obviously. I mean, does Sprague even have an ESL class? I don't know. I didn't go there, of course. Obviously, there's other ways to introduce communities, or bring communities together, I should say. But this is not being, taking kids from one community to another is not, it doesn't solve this, right? Obviously. This is a long-term, chronic issue. It doesn't get solved by just moving kids from the bus to another place. So, just think about that. You know, think about kids from different communities that just won't mesh together. All right? So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Julio. Next on the list is Phil Decker. And following Phil, we have Benny Williams.
Superintendent Perry and the board, thanks for this opportunity to address you. I'm Phil Decker, principal of Four Corners Elementary School now for a decade. On October 30th, I attended a boundary meeting at Jutson and learned that there was a proposal for Four Corner families to either go to South Salem or Sprague. I was concerned that such a significant decision would be made far away from our community without consulting any of our parents or our families about a proposal that mostly impacts them. And same for the Mary Air community, it was both communities together. So, I asked members of the Boundary Task Force to please visit with Four Corners parents to see what they thought about this impact on their lives. I appreciated the response. A meeting was held on November 20th in the Four Corners Library, about 25 parents in attendance. It was really an emotional meeting, first because parents were concerned about leaving their beloved North Salem High School that they've gone to for so many years. Next, the focus shifted to the options of South versus Sprague. Parents looked at the maps and saw that South was about the same distance as North. They also learned that South, although not a Title I school, is growing in diversity, which provides comfort for our families. Parents learned that Sprague is located, when they learned where Sprague is located, they expressed concerns about the proposal. Far from Four Corners, difficult for families to drop off and pick up their kids, no bus service, gas is expensive. As you might know, 90% of the families at Four Corners are considered in poverty. Lots of kids walk to school. Many of our parents don't drive for a whole variety of reasons. Other questions were related to Sprague not having necessarily adequate services for student or families. Do they have bilingual and diverse staff that mirrors our families and our communities who understand language and culture? Would kids face harassment, and will parents feel welcome in a majority-white school, especially given our current national reality? Could be scary to go to a school on the other side of the highway. Do staff have the resources and training necessary to support English-language learners, to support students struggling with behavior, trauma, and basic needs? We need the board to approve a plan that breaks down barriers to student success, not one that erects even more barriers to their success. Finally, in my opinion, our families should not be asked to provide an integration service to the Sprague community by busing our kids across town by day and returning them back to their neighborhood in the evening. They have enough on their plate. If members of the Sprague community value diversity, they have the opportunity to move to more diverse communities. They can lobby for low-income housing in the Sprague area and draw more diverse families to the area so they can live together with their new neighbors and friends. So, I'm asking to please apply that equity lens to the Sprague option. Remember that an equity lens is not a diversity lens. The board is asked to remove obstacles of our most vulnerable students and families, not to increase obstacles to their comfort and success.
Thank you, Phil. Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams will be next. And following Mr. Williams will be Dr. Regina Richardson.
Reginald.
Oh.
Richardson. Reginald Richardson is following. Good evening. I'm Benny Williams. I'm a resident of Southeast Salem. I'm the president of the Salem Kaiser branch of the NAACP. As I speak to this action item 6B, I ask and strongly point out that my community objects and would ask for a postponement of passing this proposal tonight. I heard at the beginning, the first two speakers speak of both the importance of the work that's been done, and then another speaker very eloquently pointing out that this particular proposal at this point continues to disregard a vast, important part of this community, and that's the diversity of this community. I stand before you tonight to tell you that as long as this committee was formed and all of the outreach that was done, the African-American community was not vested in it. And I won't tell you why, I cannot tell you why, but I can tell you that as we stand here today, this part of the community, which is the most vulnerable as far as graduations, this board is responsible, along with the superintendent, of seeing that all of our students have an opportunity of graduating. Year in, year out, for the last number of years, we're seeing that not to be true for the African-American students in this system. And let's remember, we're talking about a small number. The resources that's been given to other minority community participants in the school district has not been afforded the same to the African-American community. And boundary changes are important. They are a step toward bringing equity to the district. But I'm of the opinion, and it's of importance to my community and to the NAACP, that when we look at the Statesman Journal article, there's discussions about it being merging two different issues into discussion. It's been biased to one degree or another. I suggest that that article has brought all of us here tonight. I suggest as well that being here tonight is to be able to hear more clearly some of the things that's been missing in this proposal, some of the things that still needs to have discussions around this proposal. And I believe that there's no rush, there should not be a rush to ratify this proposal tonight, given it's taken all of these years to get to where we are. Unfortunately, where we are is, we still have poor graduation rates for the most vulnerable students in our school district. Funding, boundary changes are integral. They interconnect. They cannot stand alone, and that's why we're asking very vehemently that this proposal be not passed tonight, be postponed so that more dialogue can be had that will address issues that is not currently represented in this proposal. So, I thank you for your time tonight. And frankly, you know, as the first speaker took a little bit more than her allotted time, I would just say this. It's important for us to recognize, as we look at this board, this school district board, the Salem Kaiser School District, it does not reflect the diversity of this school system. And listen, we've got elections coming up that we hope will change that, but here's the reality. It does not. But you have the responsibilities for reflecting that diversity. That is your responsibility, whether you're African-American, Latino, or otherwise. That is your responsibility. And so, I'm tasking and asking of you all to postpone approving this tonight, give more time for additional dialogue to be had, and that we can end up being on the same page and we can move this process further along to get to what we're trying to get to. And that is, not simply diversity, it's bringing all of our students along and bringing up the graduation rates of this school district. Thank you.
Superintendent, members of the board, I'm Dr. Reginald Richardson, not Regina Richardson, at least not tonight.
I apologize sincerely.
I am profoundly disappointed in the Salem Kaiser School District's plan to approve the Boundary Review Task Force recommendations tonight. I believe that these recommendations are not in the best interests of our students or our community. Last year, the community was told in the 2018 bond request that overcrowding would be addressed and the district's six traditional high schools would be expanded to serve the current and expected growth in the district. Overcrowding at Mckay High School has reached intolerable levels. Mckay High School and its feeder system are where students of color are predominantly served. Mckay has the largest high school student body and the lowest graduation rates of students of color, and especially African-Americans. I'm deeply concerned that the Boundary Review Task Force recommendations will reinforce racial segregation in our schools. Racial segregation is especially egregious by creating isolation from opportunities across multiple environments. The lack of equitable distribution of school resources critically impacts the psychological and academic well-being, opportunities, and life chances of all of our students. The district's proposed plan of segregation reinforces negative notions of difference and promotes supremacy. and promotes supremacy, particularly when certain communities are "not ready for integration", resulting in further disadvantaging of our students of color. It must be noted that it is ironic that on tonight, the Board is scheduled to issue a proclamation commemorating African-American Heritage Month while forgetting that the issues of "readiness for segregation" was settled some 65 years ago in Brown versus the Board of Education, where the Supreme Court ruled that segregation in public schools are unconstitutional. Segregation then and segregation now is not without the deleterious impacts for both the perpetrator and the victim. The Boundary Review Task Force recommendations and the district's apparent unwillingness and unlawful actions denying the provision of public resources and educational opportunities to all students undermines your fundamental mandate to ensure equal access to free, safe, and public education. I strongly object and request that the vote for the Boundary Redistricting Proposal be further postponed until a more equitable solution can be negotiated and pursued. We fear that continuing on this path of unlawful segregation may put the district in legal jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Next person on the list is Kelly Syke. And following Kelly is Javier.
I can't read the last name.
Superintendent Perry, Ms. Goss, and members of the Board, I don't come to you as somebody with a fancy speech or somebody who is used to speaking to adults. I am a school teacher, a special ed school teacher, who is very accustomed to speaking to third- to fifth-grade students who have the cognition level of an infant to a toddler. So speaking to you is difficult for me, and I do ask for your patience with that. I want to talk to you about the boundaries, but a very small category within the boundaries, and that is, as we are making decisions based on making sure that we have appropriate special ed programs in each of the feeder schools, which this is awesome, I really like this, I'm concerned about how these decisions are being made as to which programs will be relocated. We all know about the importance of relationships with our students, but I think it's important to also recognize and understand the importance of relationships within our buildings. The building that I work in is fabulous. They totally accept the special ed students that are there. We had some situations today that, in many buildings, would have just been a major problem, and instead I had second-grade students lined up waiting patiently because they knew that he was in A1, and it's okay. We have one student that mainstreams for reading, not in his accurate grade level, but at his learning level. Most buildings are not going to have teachers who are willing to do this. I have a student that is in the school choir without an adult assistant, doing a wonderful job because of the willingness of our choir director. Most of our students are involved in various mainstream activities. They are involved in Day of the Child with several different classrooms. They don't all move together, I said, "two, two, two, two", works really well. Not all of them come with adult assistants. They're all involved in the Green Zone celebrations. If they are able to participate in that day, that would be our PBIS celebrations. All of my students, if they are able to handle the behavior that day, are involved in assemblies. We were recently spotlighted in one of our assemblies as a classroom to present how to develop the character trait of friendliness. We have general ed students who are top-notch students who come to work with my students as a reward system for my students, and it's helping to develop the understanding and the empathy that they need for individuals with disabilities. We have an amazing relationship with our administration. They are in support of all of these things that we do and wanting it to expand rather than reduce. I'm begging that as you guys are looking at this, that you please, rather than just choosing locations of what will be moved, that you look at individual programs. And yes, I understand that this takes time and therefore costs money, but please look at the individual programs and determine which individual program should be moved, rather than just going, "Yeah, okay, we've got two DKs here, so we're gonna move one." Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Buenas noches, señores de la junta directiva.
Good evening, I'm members of the school board.
Superintendent Perry.
And Superintendent Perry.
Mi nombre es Javier Quiroz.
My name is Javier Quiroz.
Y estoy aquí como representante de la coalición para la igualdad de Salem Kaiser.
And I'm here as a representative of the--
Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. Quiero darles, quiero agradecerles por la participación que tuvimos como familias hispanas.
I want to thank you for the--
Participación.
For the participation that we have as Hispanic families.
En el comité de los límites escolares.
In the boundary school committee.
Para beneficiar a las familias de estudiantes con más necesidades.
To support the more needed families.
Yo apoyo la propuesta de los límites escolares en el día de hoy.
I support the proposal for the boundary changes today.
En todos mis años como miembro de esta comunidad--
In all the years as a member of this community.
Nunca vi tanta oportunidad para los latinos para participar.
Never, I never saw this many opportunities for Hispanic to participate.
Yo quiero decirles que hoy que estoy de acuerdo y apoyo la recomendación de los límites escolares.
I wanna tell you that I'm in support, and I support the changes.
En un momento hubo una discusión acerca de llevar a los estudiantes de Four Corners a la escuela Sprague.
At one point, there was a discussion in regards transporting the community of Four Corners to Sprague.
Yo valoro mucho que ustedes tomaron tiempo y escucharon a los padres de Four Corners.
I really value the time you took to listen to the parents of Four Corners.
Que dijeron que ellos no querían llevar a sus hijos a Sprague.
That they said that they don't wanna take their kids to Sprague.
Nuestras familias dijeron claramente--
Our families clearly said--
Que ellos no podían transportar a sus hijos--
That they couldn't transport their kids.
En las noches para participar en reuniones--
During the nights to participate in reunions.
Después de la escuela.
Or activities after school.
O en programas de deportes.
Or in sports.
Otra vez, yo apoyo la recomendación, apoyo la recomendación de hoy en frente de ustedes.
Again, I support the proposal here.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, you're appreciated. Yadira. Javier.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva y Superintendent Perry.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Perry.
Mi nombre es Yadira, y yo quiero agradecerles por esta oportunidad de estar aquí.
My name is Yadira, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight.
Soy madre de estudiantes del distrito escolar.
I am a mother of Salem Kaiser School District students.
Y empleada de la coalición para la igualdad de Salem Kaiser.
And I work for Salem Kaiser Equality.
También tuve el privilegio de participar en el comité de los límites escolares.
I have the privilege of participating in the school board committee.
Y estoy muy orgullosa de los cientos de padres que participaron.
And I'm very proud of the thousand parents that participated.
Y agradezco al distrito--
And I thank the district.
--por invitar y escuchar las necesidades de la comunidad.
To invite and listen to the necessity of the community.
Nosotros sabemos claramente que los padres no quieren ir a las escuelas.
We know that the parents doesn't wanna go to schools.
Que no son parte de sus vecindarios.
That they don't belong to the neighborhood.
Los padres no están de acuerdo de que lleven a los estudiantes en autobuses.
The parents are not in accordance to take their students in school buses.
A escuelas que están lejos de esos, de sus vecindarios.
To faraway schools away from their neighborhood school.
De nuevo, yo me siento muy orgullosa--
Again, I feel so proud.
--y estoy de acuerdo con la propuesta que está siendo presentada ante ustedes el día de hoy.
And I support the proposal that is presented to you today.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Señores de la junta directiva y Superintendent Perry.
Members of the school board and Superintendent Perry.
Mi nombre es Lucia, y vivo en Salem.
My name is Lucia, and I live in Salem.
El trabajo del comité de límites escolares nos incluyó y apoyó a los estudiantes del distrito.
The school community job, they support us and support the student of Salem Kaiser School District.
Sabemos que fue un trabajo largo y difícil, pero los resultados apoyan lo que nuestras familias prefieren.
And we know that this was a long process, but we know that the results support what our families want.
Yo estoy de acuerdo y apoyo la propuesta que está siendo presentada a ustedes hoy.
I support the proposal today.
Estamos preocupados por la cantidad de niños que hay en la escuela McKay.
We are concerned about the amount of kids that McKay has right now.
Y sabemos que el distrito está planeando cambios importantes.
And we know that the district is making important changes.
Para mejorar las condiciones de nuestros estudiantes.
To improve the student conditions.
El área del norte de Salem--
The north area.
Continúa creciendo y es importante para nosotros.
Is growing constantly, and it's important for us.
Que nuestras familias--
That our families.
Sientan que pertenecen y aman a sus escuelas.
Feel that they belong and they love their schools.
Los niños--
The kids.
Más vulnerables--
More vulnerable.
Y con más necesidades.
And more needy.
Necesitan su apoyo.
They need your support.
Nosotros estamos de acuerdo con la propuesta del comité de límites escolares.
We support the proposal tonight.
¿Saben? Hace como una semana--
You know, a week ago.
Una madre de familia que--
One mother of a family.
Que le interesa involucrarse con sus hijos--
That likes to be involved with her kids.
--en las actividades de la escuela.
In school activities.
Vino llorando--
Came crying.
Frustrada.
Frustrated.
Impotente.
Impotent.
Por saber sobre los cambios--
She wanted to know about the changes.
--de dónde mandarán a sus hijos.
To where her kids were going to be sent.
A una distancia-- A una distancia donde ella no puede seguir participando.
To a school where they cannot continue participating.
Ya que ella no maneja.
Because she cannot drive.
Ella llorando--
She was crying.
--por saber que sus hijos--
Because to know that her kids--
Estarán en un ambiente que no es el de ellos.
Will be on an environment that they don't belong to.
Y uno de sus niños en ese momento--
And one of her kids in that precious moment.
Le dice a su mamá.
Tell her mother.
Mami.
Mom.
O sea que ya no podrás ir con nosotros a la escuela.
So that means that you cannot go with us to the school?
Yo les pregunto.
I'm asking you.
Cuánta ayuda van a necesitar.
How much help they will need.
De consejeros. Para apoyar a estos niños.
To support these kids.
Para adoptarse--
To adapt.
--a una comunidad--
To a community.
--que no es la de ellos.
That they don't belong to.
Y ellos se enfrentarán solos.
And they will face that alone.
Ya que sería difícil para su mamá.
Because it will be very difficult for their mother.
Seguir involucrándose con ellos en las escuelas.
To continue being active in their schools.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next on the list, oh gosh, Arnolfo. And I can't quite read the other one.
Good evening, everyone.
Gracias por darnos la oportunidad, los padres también, para expresarnos.
Thank you for allowing parents to express themselves here.
Es que nos afecta el cambio que nos hace.
This change that you--
Nos afecta el cambio que quieren hacer. Yo tengo cinco hijos y todos han ido a la misma escuela.
I have five kids, they have all gone to the same school.
Yo participo como voluntario anteriormente, y es bueno estar cerca porque podemos participar más, y si ellos dos cambian más lejos, no--
I participated in my child's education, I go to school every night when I come from work.
Lo siento, sorry. Pero es que es algo que sí nos afecta emocionalmente, no nomás a los padres, sino también a los niños.
And it's concerning to me, some of the changes were concerning to me, but now hearing that these changes could even take us farther, concerns me even more.
Porque pues conocemos nuestra comunidad, y estamos muy apegados con los maestros, todo es muy bonito, y si nos dan a hacer un cambio así, yo no voy a poder participar con mis hijos como lo hacía anteriormente.
I know the teachers, I know the community, I am connected to the school, and I want to continue participating. If I am going farther away, I won't be able to have the same level of participation.
Por favor que tomen en cuenta a las familias también.
Please take in consideration the voice of the families.
Por ejemplo, ahorita muchos papás no pudieron venir, porque no pueden venir, no tienen como.
For example, a lot of parents couldn't be here today because they're working, they don't have the means also or transportation to get here.
So, me gustaría que quedara así y pues que nos apoyen.
So I would like to ask for your support tonight.
Y que piensen en los niños también.
And then please think of my kids and the other kids.
Muchísimas gracias por su ayuda y que nos escucharon.
Thank you very much for your support and for listening to me.
Angelica Flores is next. And behind Angelica is Olivia Palazzo.
Buenas noches, miembros de la junta directiva y Superintendent Perry.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Perry.
Mi nombre es Angelica, y vengo hoy como madre de familia.
My name is Angelica, and I come today as a parent.
Y representante de la coalición para la igualdad.
And as a representative of the Coalition for Equality.
Les vengo a agradecer su apoyo con el comité de límites escolares.
I come here to thank you for your support with the Boundary Committee.
Y el trabajo que hicieron todos los miembros que representaban a diferentes comunidades.
And the work that all the members that represented different communities--
De nuestra ciudad.
And representatives from all of our city and the work that they did together.
Como madre y empleada de la coalición--
As a mom and an employee of the Coalition.
Escuché claramente que los padres no quieren que sus hijos vayan en autobuses a lugares lejos de su casa.
I heard clearly from parents that they don't want their kids to go in buses to faraway places, places far away from their homes.
También escuché que las familias de Four Corners--
I also know that families from-- I also know that families from Four Corners.
No quieren ir a Sprague porque es muy lejos de sus casas y sus vecindarios.
Didn't like the idea to go to Sprague because it's very far from their homes and their neighborhood.
Queremos que sepan que estamos de acuerdo con la propuesta que tienen hoy enfrente de ustedes.
We want you to know that we are in agreement with the proposal that you have in front of you today.
Gracias por su apoyo y su atención.
Thank you for your support and your attention.
Thank you. Ann Olivia next, and then Jasmine.
Can Jasmine go before me?
No, you are next.
I can't let Jasmine go in front of me. Okay, good evening, school board chairs, Blasey, and are you guys co-chairs now, vice chair? Sharonis, vice chair, I wasn't sure. My name is Ann Olivia Palazzo Angulo and I live at 3644 31st Avenue Northeast, Salem, Oregon. I am the executive director of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. And along with our partners at Pecun, a farm workers' union, Capacitance Leadership Institute, Mano a mano Family Center, LUS, a youth organization, and CAUSA, an immigrant rights organization. We all extend our appreciation to the citizen members and co-chairs of the Boundary Task Force for their time and dedication to this effort and to the hundreds of parents who came out and made the time to be engaged in this process. I want to thank Kristi Perry and the leadership she has shown and being truly responsive to her entire community. She has patiently engaged us and instructed her staff to engage us, as messy as it is to engage communities. The most recent example was this Boundary Task Force, which was the most diverse advisory group that I've ever seen in Salem in our work with 20 years here. And hundreds and hundreds of parents were engaged who attended the schools that needed the boundary changes. It's something that our beliefs and values are extremely serious about. The parents and the children who are the affected also get to make the most decisions about their own lives. But as always, equity is a process and there is always more that can and should be done to intentionally engage Salem's multiple diverse communities, especially those whose children suffer the most and continue to lag behind. We have much to be thankful for, for the many hundreds of Latino students who continue to progress and are finally closing the achievement gap, in part due to the involvement of thousands, thousands of parents and 20 years of advocacy. But we don't want you to forget that our African-American children are not making progress. Our Native American children are not making progress, and our Islander students are not making progress. These are examples of communities who are about 1% of our huge district. They feel completely invisible and marginalized, and their parents feel the same way. It is so great to see this increased community engagement, but now we have to figure out how to get everybody to the table, and it takes some really intentional, culturally responsive, very different ways of engaging with each one. It took us years to figure out how to get Latino parents to the table, and now hundreds are involved. We strongly encourage the school board to continue listening and reaching out to all voices, and we encourage everyone in the community to make time to be engaged when these opportunities arise. This way, we can continue to working to make our schools the best in Oregon.
Next on the list is Jasmine. I don't have a last name. Do we have a Jasmine left?
Buenas noches de la mesa directiva y superintendente Perry.
Good evening, members of the school board and superintendent Perry.
Mi nombre es Hasmin, vivo en Salem y vengo hoy como representante de la coalición para la igualdad.
My name is Hasmin, I live in Salem and I come today as a representative of the Coalition for Equality.
Gracias al comité de escolares y al distrito por tomar en cuenta las miles de voces de la comunidad.
Thank you for the committee and for the district and to the district for taking in consideration the thousands of voices in our community.
Yo escuché a los padres decir que nuestra comunidad no quiere que se transporten los estudiantes lejos de su vecindario.
I heard parents say that our community does not want their kids transported to schools far away from their community.
Yo escuché que la comunidad quiere seguir perteneciendo y continuar participando en los eventos y el involucramiento de las familias en sus escuelas.
I heard that the community, our community, wants to continue feeling a sense of belonging and continue participating in the events and continue to be involved in the schools where their students go to.
Y que no quieren que sus hijos sean transportados en autobuses lejos de su vecindario.
And that they don't want their kids to be transported to schools outside of their neighborhoods.
Estoy confiada en que esta propuesta cumple las necesidades de nuestros estudiantes.
I trust that this proposal meets the needs of our students.
Trabajamos con familias y ellos tienen miedo por sus hijos.
We work with families and they have fear for their kids.
Ya que si mandan a sus hijos más lejos.
Because if you send their kids farther away.
¿Qué va a pasar cuando sus hijos se sientan mal estando dentro de la escuela?
What is going to happen when their kids feel sick during the school day?
Y cuando las familias no manejan, ¿cuánto tiempo tardarán en llegar?
And since a lot of our families can't drive, can you imagine how much time it will take them to get to the school?
Gracias por su apoyo y su atención.
Thank you for your support and for your attention tonight.
It's quarter after seven. I think we're gonna take just, we wanna listen to all of you, but we need to make a quick break. So let's just take five minutes of a break, and then we have another sheet to go through, and then we'll finish our program. The restrooms, for those concerned, are just straight down the hall. Thank you so much. We need to continue on. I do appreciate your friendliness and what have you. You looked almost like a regular party out there, so thank you. Next person to speak will be Autumn Brightweiser. And after Autumn, we'll have Tara Guyan.
Garcia.
Garcia.
All right, thank you. My name is Autumn Brightweiser, and I have taught art at McKay High School for 18 years. And tonight, I'm urging you to either vote against or to delay the boundary proposal for more time to develop creative alternatives to thoughtfully consider the well-being of our district as a whole. The current recommendations of the task force have clearly communicated to the public that not all students and faculty matter the same, and that some are more deserving of appropriate funding and facilities and equitable class sizes and supports. McKay is comprised of a beautiful diverse student population, and it's our moral imperative that we speak on their behalf. We are gravely understaffed, overpopulated, and completely strained. I teach art in a class that has reached enrollment numbers up to 42, and I remember when rosters fit on one page. My classes can include up to 30 ELL students, nine students with disabilities, eight on modified diploma, 10 health alerts, several are life-threatening, confidential files and release restrictions, several DLC students, immigrants, EGC, LRC, and some with AIDS, but most with not. I have EGC students who could significantly benefit from the therapeutic qualities of my program, but walk in, take one look, shout an expletive, and walk right back out, never to return. I have several students who need to leave class early because their walk to their next class causes great anxiety for fear of being hurt in the halls. With 40 students each wearing a 50-pound backpack because their locker is too far to access and passing time is limited, there's often not enough space in my room to sit, lay out materials, and get into any sort of creative flow in the art sanctuary. In addition to trying to plan and implement innovative lessons that will hook and engage 40 different personalities, I have to monitor that student who's on suicide watch, the student who just lost her mom, the student whose dad was deported, and our students have incredible needs and many have survived unfathomable trauma. How am I supposed to make connections with each of these students in an impactful way, which is the prerequisite to getting a student to buy and into engage in learning? Am I more qualified? Yes, but because I have learned on the fly, okay? I am losing personal connections with my students, and what has taken me two weeks to learn names now takes me an entire semester. If I subtract instruction time, two-page roll call, and the other unpredictable events that a teacher cannot prepare for at the beginning of a period, and divide the remaining time among the number of students in my class, the rare gift of individualized instruction per student is down to literal seconds. If I'm lucky enough to receive one of the few remaining IAs for the multitudes of special needs students in my classes, there's often nowhere for the IA to sit and work directly with their student. I'm ashamed to admit that I rely on daily absences each period for adequate space for my regular attending students to do their work. Teaching has become triage. You are losing amazing teachers due to stress and burnout every year. We feel like failures when it's a failure of the system, yet those in charge appear to find it difficult or inconvenient or afraid, or maybe just don't know how to make the changes to repair this crumbling foundation. So the burden is then again placed on the shoulders of the teachers to make it work. When we are told to differentiate, do more group work, sit back, just facilitate, let kids take ownership of their learning, modify, modify, modify. It is what it is. Just focus on what you can control. Don't worry about getting through your curriculum, and don't forget self-care. These students are someone's son or daughter, maybe even yours, and certainly mine. They're not getting the best of their teacher. We're sacrificing our physical and our emotional health, not to mention the remaining energy we have for our own families at home. Okay, in preparation for tonight's vote, I can only hope that as a compassionate human being with a strong moral compass, you have done your due diligence and informed yourself of the negative impacts of overcrowding in schools, the positive effects of students attending culturally and economically diverse schools, that you have toured our schools in depth, stood in line, sat, and had lunch with our student body, talked directly with them, tried walking in the halls from one side of the building to the other during passing time, sat on the floor during an assembly, visited a hands-on, materials-based class of 40, and truly reflected on and absorbed the reality of what it means to navigate these challenges we face every day. If you have, then by all means, vote with a clear conscience. But if you do not feel as informed as you could be and have not truly experienced what it means to be a student or faculty member at McKay, then you still have homework to do. You have the power, you have the control. I'm merely a service worker, albeit one you hired and found me qualified enough to take care of the needs of your children and our children. I'm excellent at what I do, and by God, give me 42 students and I will make them drooling creatives in 18 weeks, and I will retain your disenfranchised students. I'm one of those teachers who will follow protocol, buy into and implement your initiatives, work her tail off, and make you look really good to the community in the process. But we are a rare and dying breed. Statistically, most new teachers won't be able to endure. I will continue to do my job until it kills me, and it's imperative that you do yours as well. So please think progressively and creatively as you are faced with a unique opportunity to better the whole and improve the foundational elements required for a strong district educational system while clearly communicating to your community that all children matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Autumn. And Tara.
My name is Tana Garcia, and I teach at McKay High School. It's okay. My handwriting was probably really sloppy. I don't have an elaborate speech tonight, and I'm gonna try really hard to stay under time. I'm just gonna talk from my heart with a few bullet points. It's my desire that you vote no for the boundary proposal at this time. And for me, it's really about the capacity projections. They're just not good enough. And I don't know the answer. I think community members shared really important information with us tonight, and their voices matter. I also know that the bond oversight committee has the capacity to redistribute the bond money in a way that is more equitable. The way it is now. Here's the problem. When I look at it, I'm looking at it from the lens of working at McKay, and I live over by West. In 2022, McKay's supposed to be at 98% capacity after everything is done. In 2027, we're gonna be at 97%. I actually don't believe these projections. They never are right. West in 2027 will be at 82%, and Sprague will be at 85%. Here's the thing. The actual capacity for our school is 1,700 students. We're almost at 2,600. I've sent you a list of what it means to work in an overcrowded school. One of the things is, I have 13 student aides. I don't need 13 student aides. I don't know where to put them all. But it's because there are absolutely no classes for them. So they come to me, and they already have a couple releases, and they say, "There are no classes for me." And I say, "Well, I won't have work for you, but if you can find a corner, I'll watch you, and you can work." Students, I try to teach bell-to-bell, and I'm also a rule follower, and the students beg me to leave early. "Can we leave? Can we..." No, but Ms. Garcia, we wanna get to the lunch line. If they have five minutes to eat their lunches, they consider it, they're super lucky. That is just not right. It's not okay. And if we approve this now, there's no accountability for this to change. So something needs to be done. I fully believe in the power of education. It's why I'm a teacher. I believe that what I do in the classroom every day can impact the lives of my students, not just for them, but for generations to come. But it is not okay that my students have less. Thank you.
Lisa Taylor next, and following Lisa is Gillian Carney.
Carrie.
Carrie.
Hello, my name's Lisa Taylor. I live in the Highland Neighborhoods neighborhood, and I'm a member of the Boundary Review Task Force, and I just wanted to share my experience on the task force. I don't have the answer for you guys about whether or not you should approve these, and I don't envy your decision, but I thought my experience might be helpful. I believe that the boundaries the task force proposed are, for the most part, fine. In fact, they're even good in some areas, but they're not the best boundaries we could have given you. At the end of the process, it was pretty clear to me and to others that there was a small but vocal contingent of the Sprague group that was not operating on good faith. I don't believe that they ever intended to create the best boundaries for the school district, but rather to protect the boundaries of the Sprague feeder system. I wasn't going to speak today because I believe I was part of a collaborative process, and I understand that my concerns didn't win out, but it was a task force and compromise and all of that. But after, I also wanna say that I have a lot of respect for the effort and passions that went into the process. I didn't wanna undermine the great work that was done, especially the outreach that was done in the Four Corners area. But after talking to a few other task force members who shared similar feelings about being marginalized, reading the NAACP's letter and the Statesman Journal article, and realizing that others felt the same way I did, it seemed important to tell my story. I think we can try harder, and I think we can do better.
Hi, my name is Gillian Carey, and I live in Salem, Oregon, and I have a big speech, but I'm not going to give it anymore. Thank you, parents, for sharing your concerns. As a parent, I have those very same concerns, and my child lives in the Sprague district, in their feeder system. in their feeder system. I ask that you postpone voting or you vote no now. I ask this because we have to provide for the schools that are going to be at ninety-eight, a hundred and three, a hundred and four percent. If we are going to push capacity to maximum, then we need to start looking at the schools that will not be at maximum and reducing the amount of money they're getting on the bond. I understand you're not the committee for this, but it has to start with you guys and you have to vote this down or at least postpone it until other committees make better decisions. We have to do what's right for our kids. We have to do what's right because my child is watching. And if I don't stand here and advocate for what is right, then he is not learning what the, what I want him to learn and be the person I want him to be. I need you guys to actually step up and hear everybody's voice, including our parents. So if we're not going to change the boundaries, then you need to look at the bond before you approve any boundary changes. Thank you.
Next person is, I think, Donna.
Sieg.
Sieg, maybe? Thank you, Donna.
Hi, thank you for listening to us. It has to be hard to hear all of this. I happen to be a parent who has children in the Sprague School District. And I didn't know when we moved there that it was so non-diverse. And otherwise, I would have chosen somewhere else. But I have been blessed to teach at McKay. It's been a deep honor and I feel like I touch lives every day. You can hear the passion. That's why we keep doing it and that's why we're tired. But I just want to tell you, as a parent, I would welcome a lot more cultural diversity at Sprague. I, I know from my life, I teach ESL, that our wealth here in Salem is our cultural variety and diversity. I would love for all children to get a chance to meet other children of other cultures. I don't think we should do it on the backs of the poor kids by busing them. Historically, that was never a popular answer. We need to think harder and rethink and come up with different solutions. McKay is an amazing school. I endorse everything that they say. Our diversity is our wealth. We want our children, in whatever school, to be prepared for global future. It's in our goals and everything that we're doing because it's the reality of what's coming. You know, our school is too full, but that's not our biggest complaint. It's that we're, we do not see equity of funding. What I was hearing tonight sounded a lot like the separate but equal. And I don't see, from what I've heard about the bond, that anything's being done to fix that. And it's absolutely critical that we invest in every child. And every child does get a, a good opportunity and a good education. And I just, I think there's been an enormous amount of work that's gone into it. I just don't think it's ready for primetime yet. Thank you.
Next is Aurora Sedia. Followed by Marilyn William.
Good evening, uh, school board members, and thank you for all your work. And we know that you are going to have a big decision. I'm here to support the idea of going back and rehashing the needs of our community. A retired Salem Kaiser School teacher, so I'm going to share a story about busing because busing has been an experience here in Salem Kaiser since I attended Richmond School when I was six years old. And I'm sixty-seven, so it's been a long time. We, uh, in the eighties and nineties had some of our kids going to Sprague for a special program. And I was an ELL teacher, supporting the ELL community. And I got a call from a mother that says, "Help me, I need to go to a school and pick up my child." And so I said, "What school?" And she said, "I don't know." "You don't know where your child is?" "No, I don't know. They just come and pick him up and take him on a bus. But I need to get there right now." So I did all the research that I needed. I, I found out what his name was. Well, he was at Sprague. And he was, had been picked up around seven o'clock, but had a program that started at nine. And for two hours, his child was in a school bus picking up other kids that were taking them to the special program. When he got there, he was very upset, cussing. And so the bus driver called the school, says, "I'm having a child with issues." They, they met him with administrative people. They surrounded him. He went into the school, running all over the place. They called the police department. The police came. They ushered him out to the street. And Sprague is on that hill. I didn't know that until I got involved with this. And he was supposed to get on the bus, the city bus. And they put him on a city bus. The child got on the city bus, got into trouble in the city bus, ended up being a criminal. Then we have this big thing. From that experience, I learned that busing is not only the time that our children spend on the bus, driving, getting up earlier, getting home later. Our parents don't understand where the schools are. They don't understand the language. And the staff in the schools are not prepared. They don't have the staff qualified. We don't have enough counselors. We don't have enough teachers that are culturally aware and culturally trained to deal with this new community. And our departments are not prepared to support. Thank God we had an ELL department, a migrant ed department that worked with parents and that teachers were all collaborating. Well, busing is deep and it hurts the community. Nobody wins with busing. The kids never make it to be a part of the new school and the parents never feel the power that they have as parents. Thank you so much and thank you for all your hard work.
Marilyn, Marilyn William next. After Marilyn will be Nicole Garcia.
Good evening, Superintendent, and to all the chairman and to everyone on the board. My name is Marilyn Williams and I'm here to speak. First of all, I just want to state that I find it very ironic that we want to give a Black History proclamation. And we only have one high school that really promotes Black history, which is McKay High School. And Black history should not only be celebrated at McKay, but it should be celebrated at all schools. All schools should be able to give some form of Black history and celebrate it. The other part that I have a problem with is the boundary. And I hear and heard what people had to say. And I want to say, when you leave out a group of people, I don't care if it's that one percent, when that one percent is not heard, whether it's African-American, Marshallese, Chukies, Native Americans, you have not heard from everyone. The boundary, I'm asking for everyone to postpone the vote on the boundary and the funds that you're planning to give. When I find schools that says, "We don't want those kids at our school. We don't want those Title I kids at our school." Then we don't want those schools to have all of our money that we put into the school district. And our money, our taxes pay for this. And so I'm asking everyone, every last one of you, to postpone that vote until we can come together and really look at what is the best way to educate all of our children. Because our African-American children, as well as the Chukies and the Marshallese and the Special Ed are sitting down at the bottom of the barrel. It is now time to pull them out of that barrel because they're like little crabs pulling folks back. We don't want to see them being pulled back. We want to lift them up and out. So I'm asking each and every one of you to please postpone that vote, hold off on even making a proclamation on a Black History program until we can get all the schools to come together and start celebrating Black history, Native American history, Asian history, histories of all people, not just one special particular group. I'm proud of what McKay is doing, but McKay is bursting at the seams and just saying that we're going to put a Band-Aid on it is not good enough. The funds that we are saying that you're going to tax us for, then put the majority of that funds, I don't care if it's three-fourths of that funds, into McKay High School. But that is a place that really needs to grow and those students should have a fair and equitable education. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Garcia. I am a, a parent from students that go to West Salem High School. And I also grew up here in Salem. I went to Sprague High School. And I put my name on the list, not thinking I was actually going to share. But I love this city. I love this community. Thank you, teachers. I'm disappointed, and I don't know what that means, my recommendation for your vote is, but I'm disappointed that a story about the, the fails of a busing system, you know, thirty years ago, and we're still discussing this. I'm disappointed that the community that I love has not welcomed maybe what would be a more diverse student body because it may erode their property value. I'm disappointed that when I, my family and I decided for our middle schooler to go across the bridge into the Grant Neighborhood for middle school, that my neighbors were appalled that I would decide to do that. I'm disappointed that there are families here speaking out fearful over these boundary changes and what it will mean for their families. Yet it's out of fear because they might not be welcomed in these other schools. It, it's appalling to me that we're having these discussions, you know, sixty-some years after schools are supposed to be integrated. And I grew up here in Salem and I'm not sure if that has changed much at all since I was graduated in nineteen ninety-five. I'm proud of my community, but I'm ashamed that the people of privilege within this community have not been more welcoming. So for whatever that's worth, thank you.
Next on the list is Larkin Foley. And Ross Schwarzenbruber, you will follow her.
Good evening. My name is Larkin Smith Foley and I live in northeast Salem. I'm a teacher at McKay High School and McKay has been my second home for all nine years of my career in this district. I'm here in solidarity with students, families, and staff members of the Salem Kaiser School District. I want to both amplify and add my own voice to the conversation. Two years ago, this board passed a Safe and Welcome Schools Resolution. And I wanted to begin my remarks by reminding the room that we made a promise to all students, all families, and all schools and all neighborhoods that they would be safe and welcome. It is my personal belief that the biases and inequities that we are uncovering in this discussion about boundaries have existed in our communities for as long as we've had any boundaries at all. And if we do not act right now, we will only continue to operate with this set of truths for another decade in this school district until we perhaps pass another bond. We're not strangers to segregation in our city and we can't be blind to the fact that the physical and geographical markers, like a river, or a bridge, a hill, or a set of train tracks, often demarcate levels of affluence, access to resources, and graduation rates. At the last meeting, you made note of how each high school's, or you made note of each high school's demographics and percentages of populations with special needs. And our current boundary proposal does little to change these realities. So if we're not ready to integrate, then let's turn that equity lens to the next task, the renovations of our schools. We feel loyal to and protective of our families. We don't want our students to go anywhere else. We also know that sometimes we fail them in our current situation. Our graduation rates are improving and we still have so far to go. Our attendance rates are suffering. Our families are already battling to get their students to and from school, to and from their co-curricular activities, to and from their conferences. We deserve better. We have to do more for McKay and for our feeder schools. We have to do better for North Salem High School and for its feeder schools. We have to double down on our promises to provide spaces that are safe and welcoming. We can't run out of chairs in the cafeteria. We can't run out of space in the bleachers. We can't run out of seats in our classrooms and simultaneously try to convince our students that it matters when they are absent. We have to have space for them. Please hold us accountable to the promises we made and that we will continue to make our students, that they will be safe, that they will be welcome, and that they can learn and thrive in our schools. If McKay will continue to be at or over capacity while other schools are hundreds of students below capacity, then we must adjust the plans for renovation under the bond. Thank you for your time and go Scots.
After Ross, Ross will be Hanzia Beard, North High.
Good evening, Board and Chair and Superintendent Perry. My name is Ross Schwarzenbruber. I'm a parent of three students in the Salem Kaiser School District. And tonight, I am before you to ask you to vote no on the task force proposal. And this is why. You know, when, when we put the bond out, we asked a lot of questions. Number one was, where's our new high school? When are we going to get a new high school? We've done the math. You know, the last high school we had was twenty years ago, West High, two thousand and two, right? If we don't do one right now, it's going to be another ten years. You'll have a thirty-year gap for a high school. And it got me to thinking, what are they replacing a new high school with? And I have to look at C-Tech and wonder, is that where all the students are supposed to be going for our new high school? Because I think that's inequitable. I think that creates a dual economy. You are, we are having to put up with less. You want us to accept less. That's what socialist countries do. Okay, that's the socialist program in Germany is a trade school. We never agreed on a trade school. We would like a new high school on the east side. And we would like, we would also like an Olympic-sized swimming pool, a concert hall, and a soundstage. And you have six hundred million dollars to convert our economy. That is a challenge to you. So let's just scrap the West, scrap the Sprague improvements and build us the best high school for our kids on the east side that any city has. I think we can do that. So my question is, who made the decision to skip a decade for a new high school? To skip three decades for a new high school? Is it the same people who don't want to integrate? Because that's the influence that I am seeing. And I think we really need to take a look at that because you're holding our economy back with these decisions. We have new markets to develop. We need to get together and be able to do that. You keep us segregated, we can't do that. We're losing out on market. So you're blowing our economy. So you're blowing our economy. I'd like you to think about that. Go back to the drawing board, get us a new high school. That's what we need. Right? A new high school and a swimming pool. We want a swimming pool. All right? You're gonna fill in Olinger, you're gonna trash Leslie. We want a swimming pool. Thank you.
Is there a Hadsia?
Good evening. My name is Jidzia Beard and I am a freshman at North Salem High School. I am concerned about the high school boundaries specifically, and I am aware that in twenty years, for example, the capacity of McKay will be over a hundred twenty percent. It is already exceeding the capacity with an overflow of over a thousand students. And also in twenty years, South will be over one hundred six capacity, the same as North. Meanwhile, Sprague, for example, will only be at eighty-five percent. I realize that creating more equitable boundaries are on and have been on the agenda for a while. However, since I am a high school student, me and my entire school feels and will continue to feel the effects of being over capacity. Furthermore, from what I know about the other high schools and mine is that the quote "all-white" and "non-diverse" students will go to one school, West and Sprague. The Hispanics, another, and then the more diverse Hispanic students, students of color, Asians, will all be compiled into one school, North and partially McKay. We won't get the best education compared to high schools like Sprague and West because their capacity is so low. There will also be too many students in one class and the teacher won't have time to help everyone. Also, even though we have portables outside, there aren't any extra classrooms to fill. Teachers are already sharing classrooms. I propose we either build another high school in the southeast area or somewhere close to Houck, or we just need to adjust our boundary lines to be more equitable and to make our education fair and the school less crowded. Thank you.
Adam, you are next.
Thank you, Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, and other members of the Board. My name is Adam Kohler and I reside at two-two-six-six Reed Court Southeast in Salem, Oregon, Zone Four. I'm here to speak to you regarding Action Item Six B, Approval of the Boundary Review Task Force Recommendations. I'd like to spend my time before you to speak in support of the work which was conducted by the Boundary Review Task Force over the course of the last four months as I was one of the co-chairs. You may have seen recent articles or comments on social media which hope to represent to the community that the Boundary Review Task Force Recommendations did not consider the impacts that proposed changes may have in our community from a diversity standpoint, or that those potential impacts were not considered in the Task Force's final project. I'm here before you this evening to emphatically tell you that that concept could not be further from the truth. The reality of the situation is that the impacts of both social and economic diversity were at the forefront of nearly every conversation within the Task Force. These conversations were not easy to have due to the many challenges which our school district currently faces. But fortunately, the representatives of the Task Force took on those difficult conversations and worked them to the conclusions which were presented to the Board last month. Recent commentary regarding the Task Force Recommendations also appears to be applying an improper confluence of processes with respect to the Boundary Review and the application of the bond funds. The ask of the Task Force was specific in our charge as it relates to attendance projections, which will not be realized, or, excuse me, which will be realized throughout the bond construction process. This Task Force was not asked to address bond measure improvements, propose changes in curriculum, or provide any other programmatic concepts related to academic achievement. I believe that the concerns raised regarding perceived equity, access to services and resources, and improving graduation rates should be addressed by Superintendent Perry and this Board in the proper forum and not at the expense of the work that the Boundary Review Task Force completed. I'm actually gonna go off book for my last minute because I think that is important here to note. The comments and the passion that is felt in this room is not related specifically to the ask of the Boundary Review Task Force. Our charge was to address the overcrowding. Our charge was to address that overcrowding as the bond measures are being applied in a five-year span. The issues and the items that are brought up to you are things that Superintendent Perry should bring to you with her staff and that you should, as a Board, approve. But that is not the task or what the ask was of the Boundary Review Task Force. I really appreciate the passion that's in this room. I feel it's very unfortunate that that was due to a Statesman Journal article that was absolutely taken out of context and improper. And I tell you what, I spent four months in this process, folks, and I know this, the ask of the Boundary Review Task Force. I know the passion that was in that room, and I know that the outreach the school district did with our community was beyond the pale. It was fantastic. We went out to our community, we asked for input, we slowed the process down. We had those arguments within that Task Force. And the proposal that we brought to you is the, what I believe to be the best product with the challenges that we have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adam. Next, we have Robert Garcia and then Jan Montes.
Good evening, Superintendent Perry and members of the Board. Thank you so much for listening to all of us and taking this time because I know that it is gonna, it's going along, kinda long, because there's a lot of passion here. And there's a lot of passion here because we do care about our community, all of us do. We want the best decision to be made. I do not envy you because you guys do have a very difficult decision that is gonna be made. You're gonna take a vote, and I wish you, you know, I'm praying that you guys make the right decision. My recommendation, I would like you to, I'm here to talk about, basically about the Six B, and I do not believe that currently as it is with the boundary changes, it resolves the issues that we have facing us. I think it's just a very subtle way to continue to reinforce a racial segregation that has taken place in our community. And I ask you, in construction, if you take a plumb line, you use that to make sure that the construction of your house is proper. And I think right now, if you use that plumb line, we're starting to tilt, and we need to make the correction. And it's gonna take some courage on your part to do that. I know that there are plans, five-year plans, and a lot of, a lot of planning has been done for the, for the high schools that need to get fixed. But you need to also address this boundary issue. You need to figure out whether you're gonna keep this cap at twenty-two-hundred for a high school, which I think is kinda ludicrous. I mean, some schools, high schools, need to have that cap lifted so that they can be larger high schools, and so that you can build over capacity, so that these schools, when they meet, they get their bill done, that they're still not at ninety-seven percent or ninety-eight percent, or a hundred and three percent, as in the case for McNary. All right? These issues need to be addressed. I know that they're doing a lot of building, but we still have to address these issues, not only of the segregation that I think is going on, but also about making sure that those schools that are underserved, that are overcrowded, that need help, get the building funds that they need. So I am here to ask that either you postpone or reject the Task Force recommendation for the boundary changes. Thank you.
Rachel Thorsett, next. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Jan, you're right, I was carrying along the list, I apologize.
Ooh, I don't blame you. My name is Jan Montes and I live across the street from North Salem High School. I'm a proud mother of six sons who are bilingual and biracial, also a teacher. And so, good morning to you, Salem Kaiser School District School Board. I only have three minutes to speak, and I just wanna say that I appreciate that I have the freedom of expression to be here. Division, whether it be racial or income-related, is not leaving this school district anytime soon, as far as I can see, with the current sentiment of our school board and apparently others in our community. Which brings me to an unofficial comment that was made during one of our boundary change, change planning meetings. The comment was the headline of the article, Salem Kaiser School District is Not Ready for Integration, More Specifically Sprague High School. It was like a stab to my heart, the obvious truth made public, and the truth hurts. However hurtful it was for myself and many others, I want to acknowledge the hard work of all those who have worked volunteering their time, in particular Adriana Miranda, to come up with the proposal that all, that you all will be voting on tonight. Unless, of course, you've already voted on it behind closed doors, as was done with the no on Measure One-O-Five. But here we are, putting our hearts out to the school board before us. Equity begins in the heart. A good education requires more than having a high income. I don't believe spending money on busing kids around is the answer. In particular, I do not believe busing low-income students to Sprague or West to ever be a very good option. I personally don't think that Sprague or West are the bees' knees. Put the money in the schools that need it, not in those that don't. I understand boundary changes are needed from time to time, I get that. However, the issues that the Statesman Journal article has brought up to me is the fragility of being low-income and non-white. When a person is not classified as living, when a person is not classified as living in a certain neighborhood, then he can't access the best education, the education of the rich. But is it really the best? Who says? I personally do not think it is the best. I think the rich are getting gypped, and they are gyping themselves. In the low-income schools, there are great teachers, great families, great culture, bilingualism. Struggle, yes, which comes from the inequity that creates poverty and spirit of hard-working people. Not everyone can live on a hill and earn a lot of money. Does that mean that we should not get, that we should get an inferior education or that education less accessible? I think the bond money should go to the schools and the community and only those who are struggling because of their lack of money. We work hard, we just don't earn a lot. If we didn't earn, earn less, they wouldn't have more money. Are we punishing the low-income for being low-income? Many people prefer to act like disparities don't exist. And I keep saying low-income and not racial bias because it's the basis of the inequality and the racism, which in turn is tricky because the blame goes right back to the poor and the people of color being of, being non-white and non-wealthy. I recognize that if a person of color has a higher income, then they are, they, they are further trampled on and excluded. The basis is being low-income generally. The racial bias is even more painful still, and it hurts me to the core, which is why I have designed my life to not conform on purpose. But that probably comes from my white privilege, which then makes circle, makes a circle of nonsense complete. Now I really feel nauseated. What is the plan to bring the needed improvements to the high schools where the majority of the low-income students attend in our district? Will the three hundred and two million be allocated to those most in need? What does integration really require? Historically, does forced integration work? And what are the statistics for that? Would using the three hundred and two million to create economically equal schools be a good idea? Thank you.
Rachel, Rachel Thorsett, next.
Okay. So, I've changed what I wanted to say slightly over the course of the evening. But one thought is, as I think is clear, boundary line discussions can't solve all problems. But I do think that in this case, they haven't solved some problems that they could solve. And in particular, that they have not addressed the overcrowding issue. We've heard very clearly how important neighborhood schools are, and that it's, that that piece, I think, this committee has done very well and clearly looked at the needs of that community. But it then seems to have said, okay, well, we're just gonna move kids around in the four most overcrowded, least affluent schools. And you cannot solve the overcrowding issue if you only move kids around between North-South McKay and McNary. In the Salem, in the projections in the Statesman Journal, the projected population of those schools in two thousand twenty-two is eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-three kids, and the projected capacity is eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. There is no way that you can just move kids in those areas and solve the overcrowding problem. So you either need to look at the boundary lines in South Salem and take some of the pressure off South-North and the schools in the northeast part of the district, or you need to rethink the fund, the bond funding. And I don't know which one is preferable. It seems to me that looking at boundaries in South Salem, there are certainly many elementary schools in South Salem that are closer to Sprague than Four Corners. And why the discussion has been about whether Four Corners kids should go to Sprague, and that's the only issue that's come up, is really unclear to me. But overall, what was very clear when I looked at the map is that all the burden of disruption in this plan is borne by the least affluent neighborhoods in the district. That this disruption doesn't in the end solve overcrowding problems, it just moves them around a little. And that almost nothing has been asked of the more affluent neighborhoods in the district. And I don't see how you can go ahead with this plan as written and believe that we should take the idea that there is an equity lens seriously. I think some good equity work has been done. I think it's very clear that the outreach has been good, but it's, the basic issues have not been addressed, and it's not even really noted until tonight that they haven't been addressed, at least as far as I can tell. Thank you.
Maria Cisneros is next, and followed by Tyler Shockley. Maria, I don't see a hand up. Okay, what about Tyler? And Jessie Garcia?
Hello, my name is Jessie Garcia, and I'd like to thank you for letting me speak. I'm a previous graduate from McKay High School, graduated in two thousand and eighteen. And I wasn't, I was an out-of-district transfer. I transferred from West Salem to McKay, and it ended up being one of the most, best decisions of my life. McKay is so rich in diversity, and I have, my thoughts have been changed and challenged because of this diversity. And I know if we implement diversity within the schools, it will be tough initially, but it will bring out a lot of good stuff. There will be hardship in the midst of it, but there will also be a lot of growth and prejudices addressed. We believe in education because it provides equal opportunities for everyone. However, an unequal education creates more barriers for the students who start at a disadvantage. Currently, you are faced with a decision that impacts the quality of education kids receive. If the school board is truly advocating for equitable education, they will not pass this proposal. The proposal does not give McKay enough resources it truly needs to meet the needs of their students, or staff. In fact, McKay will still barely be scraping by while West and Sprague are at an advantage. I went to McKay, and my classmates were some of the brightest and most accepting individuals I've ever met. They deserve an education that says they're worth investing in. The students at McKay are, the students at McKay go to the smallest school with the most students with the least amount of resources, and that is not good enough. What does that tell to, what does that tell to our students? What message does this send? This current proposal is inequitable, and an equal education does, an unequal education does create unequal opportunities. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Next on the agenda is Angelina Lockhart, and following Angelina will be Roseanne Rice.
Hi, my name's Angelina, and I don't have any kids in the school. I don't have any stake other than I live in Salem, and I read the Satan and Journal article, and I got really mad. They said that forced integration never worked, I guess they forgot about the South. Because that's a really big, good history lesson, that white people are never ready for integration. You have to force white people to accept diversity. As far as the bond measure goes, I'm not understanding why the rich schools are getting more money than the poorer schools. It doesn't make any sense to me. They shouldn't be getting any money until the poor schools are actually up to standard. You have teachers here that are literally crying and begging you for help, and these proposals will wipe out all their dreams for help. And, frankly, we need more diversity on the board here, before you guys vote on this. Because right now, I'm seeing a bunch of white. And, in this room, I'm seeing a lot of diversity. I'm seeing black, brown, white, everything. We need to have that on this board up here. So please, you know, don't, don't go into this stuff, postpone it until we can actually get more diverse people to represent us. And, don't forget about the teachers. The McKay High Schools are great, but the, the rich schools, just because they say they're not ready for more people, so what? The McKay High School isn't ready for, to be overpopulated, they have to deal with it. You have to make them deal with getting people into their, into the rich schools. They're never going to be ready until you make them be ready. So please scrap the bond measure, please scrap the task force, because that's just a nightmare. So, please, just do right by the kids. Listen to these parents, listen to the teachers that are coming here, when they don't have enough time. They have homework and school supplies to go buy, because you guys aren't giving enough money! So please, listen to them.
Well, good evening, school board members, and Superintendent Perry, it's the second time we've met today. It makes me feel kind of fancy saying it. I had a plan of what to say, but most of it has been covered. So, I'll just tell a quick story. And, I moved to Salem five years ago, approximately, coming from Hawaii. Looked at the school, looked at the map, I knew I would be working in a school, I knew my kids would be going to school here. I looked at the map, and I knew that I might be going in some direction, because I didn't know where I'd been, or where I'd end up being hired. I ended up at McKay, we ended up in the center of town, so my kids go to South, so I'm invested in multiple schools that are changing greatly. A lot of you guys spoke to the district and the funding. I can say that when I moved to the town, I looked, I pulled up the school demographics, and I said, wow, those schools have high graduation rates, but I can't take my kids to a school like that, moving from a state as diverse as Hawaii, back to Oregon where I had been born. So, that was also a factor in where we moved when we came to Salem. I needed my kids to be in a school that had higher socioeconomic, because I had come from a place where I saw the lack of opportunities. However, when I started working at McKay, I realized it's deceptive that poor schools have poor outcomes because of the work teachers do in schools. And I know that is not exclusive to McKay, I know there are teachers that work just as hard in every school in the district. And so, I want to point out that I don't believe that there are a large group of teachers that say they're not ready for integration. I think teachers, as a group, adapt, learn, and grow. And I think that, I believe that teachers stand with students, and I really appreciate the passion in the room. To sum it up, I have no idea what I would recommend for you to do, and I would hate to be in your seat, any of your seats. However, I do know that it's your duty to serve the community as best you see fit. I think the public good is your intention, I think we've spoken to that here. I think we really need to recognize that, and I don't know what else to tell you, other than what resources will come to the schools with the highest needs, not to the schools with the lowest outcomes, or the teachers who don't work hard or are passionate about it. I personally love working where I do because of the students I work with, because I think they bring so much to the community. Thank you. Good luck.
I'll probably mess this up.
I'm Lynette, I'm from McKay High School, I'm a sophomore there currently. So, I feel like I'm in a room with a lot of emotional and angry adults right now, but I see passion, so, no one get mad at me for what I'm gonna say tonight. I feel like, the article that came out, a lot of kids at McKay didn't really know what was going on, like, boundaries and like, all that, until that article came out, because it got pulled up in school. And we wake up in the morning, and we get alerts on our phones, like, what's trending in Salem, and it was trending, it was up there. And, it was on Facebook, Twitter, it was on everything. And, I don't know, I think it hurt a lot of the kids when they were reading it, most likely because they don't want to move to other schools anyway, but if it's something to do to make integration, then they're probably willing to do it, but then when they read that a school says they're not ready for integration, it kind of puts them in a spot where it's like, well, we think that schools are all white and rich anyway, and then they come out and say this, so it makes us not want to go there even more. And then when you do move us there, it's like, you could still stay at McKay, because you've been there for two years already, but we're not gonna give you busing. So then you might, you're like, okay, well then I have to go to school where they're actually gonna bus us, so that leaves you at Sprague. But then that goes with your 24J that you guys have, with attendance, higher graduating rates. So then you'll have people not wanting to even go to school, so then, you don't really graduate if you don't go to school. So, then you have that problem. So, and then I talked to, I always forget your name, is it Wolf? Wolf, I talked to Wolf, and he says, the article wasn't quite, like, right, basically kind of bogus, like, it wasn't said. And even if it's not said, we still get that from Sprague, a lot, that they don't want integration. And, they are kind of an all-white school with rich kids. We know this because we just had a game against them on Friday, and one of the comments that were made were, we are rowdy at basketball games, I would say, at McKay, but, that we were too ghetto, and that's kind of like, well, even if they didn't say that in the article, we got that from, we're too ghetto, so it's like, it still feels like it's kind of racism going on, and they're better than us. And also with McKay, we have a lot of kids at McKay over capacity, and it kind of like, hurts to see our teachers up here crying, and begging for more space and more classrooms, and then to hear that we're only getting 11 new classrooms, but all of our portables are getting taken away, and will still be over capacity? Doesn't really, yeah, doesn't really make sense to us students, that are barely finding out about a lot of this, so it feels like a lot of decisions are being made without even consider, like, letting the students have their voices being heard. And, I think that if you want us to go to school 24J, you know, we're all about that now, and are trying to be about it, then our voices should be heard, especially if it's about our education. And you have teachers that have already graduated, and you guys have already graduated, so it's like, if you want us to go to school and want us to have a better education, you guys should probably let us put our voices in more. And, I feel like, I don't know, I feel like that our teachers should not have to beg to want us to have better learning opportunities, I feel like that should be something that's already happening. And in 2019, I don't feel like we should still be segregated, it's 2019, this is like, things, I haven't been alive for like, 60, 50, I'm only 15, so, I, I mean, but these are things that we learned in history class, that like, you guys have been talking about this for a really long time, so it's like, kind of sad that we're still talking about it, and it's 2019. And, we need more classrooms at McKay, like, it just needs to happen. And at North, I'm speaking for other schools that are colored, it's sad that schools that already have a lot, or, is getting more, like, than what it looks like we're getting, when we have a lot more colored students. And, I feel like the word needs to get spread out more, and I feel like this does need to be postponed until something happens with this, because a lot of things, doesn't feel like it's happening, really. It feels like we're gonna be stuck with a pat on the shoulder, and it's just gonna go through, and we're gonna have to, like, deal with it, and that's not how anything should go. And, I want to go back to what a parent said, we're watching you, even though you guys might, oh my gosh, they're teenagers, they don't really listen, they don't really watch, but we actually watch way more than you guys think. So if we see you guys make the wrong decision, then it's kind of like, well, this is the way to go in life, making wrong decisions, and I don't think you guys want us to do that. At all. And, I just feel like, I could say, Kristi Perry, you've always been so respectful and very, you're open, you're, you, you listen, you're very supportive. I can, I can never say that I've had a bad experience with you, ever, and I do talk to a lot of adults, and I don't like all of them that I talk to. So, I could say about you, you're very just open to hearing and learning, and even others that I've talked to or seen tonight, you guys seem very like, shaking your head and clapping at some of the things that the people are saying, so, I do believe that you guys will make a smart decision. It's a hard one, I don't expect it to be easy, but I feel like you guys will make a smart decision. And, please, let's not have another meeting where teachers are crying for students, it's kind of really sad, it's like, Ms. Foley really made me cry right here, and I don't like crying in front of people, so, yeah. And, I just want to thank all the parents that are here, because a lot of students can't be here, because there is a, there's basketball games tonight. I was actually gonna go to one of them, but I was like, it is important for someone to be here and speak for the students, especially at McKay, because a lot of them did not know what was going on until that article came out. And that article was really hurtful, even though I heard that it, it could be bogus, but I was not there, so I cannot say if it's not bogus or is bogus, it's, I, I'm not there, but, when teenagers look at media and they see that, it's kind of like, wow, our Salem kids are, wow, they're not ready for integration? When McKay and North have been integrated and colors, different colors, it's like, that's been there for a while. So I feel like Sprague, they shouldn't get anything if they're not even ready for integration. I mean, I don't, they're not ready for what comes with it, then I don't really know what, what they're gonna do, I don't think they should get anything, that's fair, at least. And also, busing kids, I actually don't live in McKay's district, but I choose to go there, because I think it's a really good school, even though they say Sprague or West is better. I think teachers at McKay are more open to conversations, they're more, they try to connect with you more. And, not all of them there were raised in, in poor, or, some of them there raising the rich, but they actually try to connect with their kids, and I think that's really important, because if you go to other schools and you don't have that, then that's the reason why kids don't want to go to school, because if they can't connect with their teachers, then what are you going to school for? So it is sad that a lot of kids can't be in a classroom because there's not enough space. And, when we have great teachers that we can connect with on a day-to-day, and our counselors, I feel like they, they're really good at letting you choose what, what teacher you want, because, I mean, I'm just gonna say, I had an easy freshman and sophomore year, because I picked all my teachers. I really did. I was like, I want that teacher, that teachers, and I got it, and I, there was like, no complaining. So, I would say they're really good at that. And, I really appreciate you guys, because you guys do have to make a hard decision. I would, we know it's not easy, and hearing this must be hard, or easy, or whatever it is, however you guys feel. But, I feel like there is, there doesn't need to be a lot of change, and I don't think busing kids to a whole different neighborhood where they're not familiar is a good idea either, because then you deal with people not wanting to go to school again, and also you deal with bullying. And, I'm a teenager, and I go to school, and I don't really deal with bullying, I do have quite a bit of friends, I would say. And, but kids couldn't be mean, I watch it, and I think you guys should hear from someone that goes to school, they could really be mean. And kids at Sprague, I would say they have a different way of handling things and saying things than we do over on this northeast side. So, I just really ask you guys to think about this more, think about McKay, North, and all schools, and to postpone it if you guys can't come to a sensible, or, just something agreeable, because this is not really agreeable in, right in this room. As we can see, no one's really happy with a lot of things that are happening. And I think you will, because I know that it is hard doing your job, and I don't want to come up here and bash you, I know, I know, a lot over, but I do appreciate you and your job, and I want to thank everyone for listening to me, because I was way over three minutes, but yeah, have a good night.
Well, I think I can honestly say that there isn't an adult in the room, whether it's the staff over there, or your board, that hasn't learned a lot, that we just have. And there isn't anybody that hasn't listened. That doesn't mean the perfect answer is right at the tip of our fingers, or that we've thought about it, but you definitely had input into your district, and you definitely started our thoughts. Yeah, another quick break, I know it's late, but we have a whole nother section, we've got action items to go, and proclamations to go, and several other things. Five minutes. And, we're going to do a few things. First of all, we're going to do, we missed a speaking opportunity for Ariel Sims, and I've been, I promised that we would listen to one more. Ariel is here. Thank you, Ariel, you want to come up? And I am sorry, I apologize, we just zipped over there.
Can you hear us, are you on the line?
Excuse me, Cherga?
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to remind you that I've heard all of the testimony so far, I am on the line.
Thank you. We are going to do the action items that we have on the agenda, and then we are, after figuring the action items, we are going to really postpone the rest of the, the agenda for tonight, it's gotten late, but we will do the, the portions that most of you are here for, such as the second action item, which is approve the boundary review task force recommendation. So we will get to that, and we will be discussing that, so you won't have, you'll, you'll see what's gonna happen. Yes, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Ariel Zimmer-Soul, and I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. So I will give you as concisely as I can my perspective as an educator, my perspective as a parent, and my perspective as an advocate. I live in Dallas, and I work at Western Oregon University. I'm an education advisor for their trio program, and many of my students that I advise come from North Salem. So, I'm intimately familiar with the struggles of undocumented students, the struggles of poor students, the struggles of first-generation students, of which I am one myself. of poor students, the struggles of first-generation students, of which I am one myself. So as an educator, I am deeply frustrated to hear that first and foremost, students haven't been involved in this decision-making process. And that's because not including them is absolutely hypocritical. If, as adults and decision-makers, we don't seek the input very intentionally of our students, we are missing out on a huge teaching and learning opportunity for them and for us. As a parent, I'm a parent of a biracial child, I have to advocate for my child at least once a year for various reasons, and I feel like the situation as it stands puts disenfranchised groups of people against one another, Latino community against black community, poor against rich, and we are just reproducing the same problem over and over. And as a parent, I'm concerned that we're putting poor kids against rich kids, black kids against Latino kids, and this is a problem that we're constructing. So I say we need to take a big step back and make sure that kids from across the district are brought into the process and that they're learning from it. So we have a role in stopping the same cycles of poverty and ignorance. So we gotta take a big step back. As an ally and advocate, I volunteer with NAACP. I try to do my best to speak up when I can in my role at the university, although it's political sometimes, so it's hard, but I do my best. And, um, I don't know what to say more about that, except that, uh, I fear that, that the route of forcing a vote, when maybe we've started a process and it's a damn good start, but, but if you want to say that you're really listening to the community and you haven't included the kids, and we're creating a situation where we're putting minority against minority, then we're not doing it the right way. So thank you very much.
The first action item that we will cover tonight, Director Green, and it will be concerning the Black African American History Month. It's a proclamation.
Madam Chair, I would move adoption of the Black African American History Month proclamation, and I'm happy to read that now, if you'd like me to.
Sure, if you would, please.
Whereas Salem Kaiser Public Schools shares Nelson Mandela's belief that, quote, "Education is the most powerful weapon you can use to change the world," end quote. And whereas Black African American History Month recognizes and celebrates the numerous contributions Black African American people have made and continue to make in the United States of America, and whereas there are more than seventeen hundred students who identify as Black or African American in the Salem Kaiser Public Schools, and whereas in nineteen twenty-six Carter G. Woodson laid the foundation for Black African American History Month because the achievements of Black African Americans were being erased from nation, from national history and underrepresented in important policy decisions, and whereas Black African American History Month affords the special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about Black African American history, heritage, and culture, and to honor the merit, the many Black African American leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty, and whereas Black African Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations, and whereas our community is better because of the diversity of our population, and whereas inclusion is a core value of our district, and the school board has a responsibility to oppose systemic racism towards people of color in Oregon and the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises, and whereas the school board promotes creating more pathways to hire educators of color and increase staff diversity in the Salem Kaiser Public Schools, and whereas the school board values student and staff equality committees in policy and decision-making, and whereas the school board commits to creating successful educational outcomes and closing the opportunity gap for the more than seventeen hundred Black and African American students in the Salem Kaiser Public Schools, now therefore, the Salem Kaiser School District Board of Directors proclaims February two thousand and nineteen to be Black African American History Month, and urges our citizens of the school district to join together in making this a period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
If we made it already? Okay, the motion has been made by Jim Green, and seconded by Director Kylo. Is, is there any discussion? Hearing none. I call on the board members to have a vote. All in favor of adopting the proclamation read by Director Green? Aye.
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 All opposed? Seeing none?
Chuck, yes.
Chuck, did you have?
Chuck.
Oh, Chuck Lee on the phone?
She has an aye.
An aye, so the proclamation is approved unanimously?
I think they're waiting for...
Do we have a signed copy from the chariot?
Yep.
All right, so you get to go up there, and she's got one up there.
We need to, yeah. Here we go.
Okay, just tell us your career goal in it. Tell us your career goal. Tell us your career goal.
To be the future superintendent.
Yeah.
She's gonna, yeah?
I'm gonna be a psychologist.
Psychol-, a psychologist? Okay? Other career goals?
A doctor.
Nice.
Nice.
A lawyer.
Oh, all right. Yeah.
It's my pleasure to present you with this proclamation, and we have kept one, but there's one. So there is one topic for you.
Thank you very much.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you, good job speaking.
I ask if there's a doctor in the house.
Okay.
Kristi, can we hire her now?
We're gonna have some time together.
Okay, if you're following along on your agenda, we're down to action item six B, which is approve the boundary review task force recommendations. Uh, Jess?
Paul.
Paul, I'm sorry, it's awfully late.
I move that we accept the boundary change recommendations.
Before that, Mr. Wolf, do you have some comments?
Uh, no.
Why don't we get a sec-, see where we are with a second, and then we'll let him make comments.
Second.
Second made by Jim Green.
I have discussion.
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 My hand is higher.
Yes, Jesse. Discussion by Director Lippold.
You wanna go first? Marty, Marty's got it.
Excuse me, discussion by Marty Hyon.
So, listening to all the testimony I heard tonight, first, I wanna say thank you to the, the Boundary Task Force for all the work they did. I know it, it was a lot of work. I'm hearing that busing kids isn't the answer. What really is the answer is to make more room at McKay, and make it better and bigger than it is now. I don't wanna put kids on a bus for a long time, and it doesn't sound like their families want that either. So what I'm hoping we can agree to look at as a school board is, first of all, looking at the CTE programs that are available in different high schools around the district, and perhaps making some changes to make McKay the place you wanna go to because of some of the programs that they have. I would like for those families that do want to go to another school, like Sprague or West, that we provide some sort of assistance. I know we can't bust them, but we could provide some sort of mileage or some other type of assistance. I would like to look at that. That would help McKay as far as the overcrowding. And I would like us as a board to look at moving, uh, making more classrooms for McKay to, to reevaluate the bond. We're getting ready to start the design process right now, and even though McKay, the McKay feeder system is getting the largest amount of the bond money, it's not enough. So I would like us to look at that as a board and make some adjustments as to which schools are getting what, to make things more equitable for McKay and North as well. Finally, I, um, will be voting yes on the boundary change, because that will provide immediate relief for McKay in the fall, and if we don't, it won't. But you have my word that we will look at and discuss these options to try to make McKay a better place to go to school.
Director Lippold?
All righty, um, I got a few things to say, so buckle up. All right, well, um, just right off the bat, I just, I wanna acknowledge everybody who, who came to speak tonight, just because we're having a tough conversation that most districts around our state, around our nation even, aren't having. Right? Just the fact that we're all able to get into this room, uh, be vulnerable, be able to express dangerous ideas, ones that aren't politically correct. Being able to talk about things that, um, that you can get ridiculed for right afterwards, right? I mean, I'm sure the second I get home, I'll have a Twitter mob after me, so that's, I'll probably get blocked or something, I don't know. But, uh, but the important thing is, I, everybody who came here, you, you can tell that people came here to try to do what's right. You can tell that from, throughout this, the way that we did this, I saw the hearts and the, and the hard work that people put in to fight for kids, to fight for what, what we're doing. And I just wanna give everybody a round of applause, for you, those of you who showed up, for people who were in the task force, uh, for everybody who put in this hard work. So we, 'cause we deserve it, everyone does, you guys do, and good job. So right off the bat, um, but then we get into the tough stuff. Right off the bat, from the, uh, the article from The Statesman, I just, I just wanna say, if, if it was out of context, which I can't say yes or no, because I, I don't recall the exact wording, so I don't wanna be quoted on that. However, those words were actually said, they, it happened. And some clarification on that, on the meaning and behind it, I think would have been a great way to calm down people and show them that the intention was good, which I believe, I don't believe the intention was to be bad or to harm, but I, I do think it, um, it didn't come across the way maybe it wasn't intended to. And secondly, um, around that same conversation, when we were talking about shipping kids to Sprague, which I'll get to that in a second, was the comment about property values. People were talking about, uh, there was a comment about how shipping kids over there, changing the class sizes at Sprague would lower property value. Okay, are we focused on property value, or are we focused on kids? Um, and I think that's when we're looking at things through the equity lens, right? Not through the my-money-bags lens, which me, as a property owner, I would love my property value to go up to a million, right? You know, you take every kid and have, give me one kid per teacher in my school, my property value would skyrocket. But that's not what's best for kids, it's not what's best for, for our district, right? And so we, I think we need to keep our focus on kids and on what we're doing. As far as where we're headed with this, I feel like this is better. I mean, you can tell by the numbers. It's better than where we're at currently, the, the projection, where things are going. It is better. But just like when we're helping students, just like when I'm helping the student that I mentor, and the other people that I talk to and that I help, you don't want to settle for good or fine. Those are the words I heard over and over again tonight, like, we, it's good work, you're right, it's a C, we passed, good job, but we want an A, we, we want more of our community, and I hold my community to a high standard, I hold us to a high standard. I want our kids to be able to, uh, to be able to make it, to have a shot and to see a future for themselves. And so as we're talking about that, one, um, a lot of the, there was a lot of concern about feeling that we have to approve this because we don't wanna ship kids to Sprague. From my area, I live in Four Corners, and that, me personally, I don't think we should do that, that's just a bad idea. We don't wanna ship kids just so we can have token Brown kids at, at Sprague, just so we can pat ourselves on the back and say, wow, we did a great job. Meanwhile, those kids can't go over to their neighbor's house and play with their friends 'cause their friends live across town. Um, that's, I just don't think that's a good idea. However, the people who brought it up were trying to have good intentions by trying to promote diversity, right? And that's why these are hard, these conversations are hard, the people who brought that up were going out on a limb to try to, hey, how can we address this? And it really sucks, because the second you say something like that, um, it's, you can't, one, you can't take it back, right? If you misspeak or something, it's, it's really hard to be able to correct that. And then secondly, we get very emotional, because there's a lot of hurt, there's a lot of pain from the past. I mean, as Native American, I mean, we've seen our past get erased, and so, I mean, that's a super tough thing to deal with, and I can understand why so many, so much of our community would feel that way. Um, I'm not trying to ramble on forever, so I apologize for that. But it, it comes down to this. When we were talking about, um, how does, how did, the boundary lines and how things work, I think there, I, I don't, I don't think this is, this is good, but I don't think it's our best. I think that we can do better, and I, I say that, in a way, I'm not, I'm not trying to bring down the work that was done, right? I think people did really good work, I think they did the best that they could at the time with the information given, but I think that we, um, I think that we can do better. I really think that we can. I don't, I don't think, there's a lot of questions that we could ask, like, for example, when I brought up, um, hey, how can we get more kids to Sprague, or how can we move classrooms? We were talking about, like, different schools, and people, I got a comment about how one school, just because of the income of that school, should be split up, so that way one school can have better parent clubs, and the other one can, can match them. And so it begs the question, should we be dividing kids by, uh, by race? Should we be dividing kids by income? Should we be dividing them by location? Those are all things that we have to talk about as a community. I mean, I'm in real estate, right? I'm a real estate agent, and with, if I'm doing advertising, it's illegal for me to discriminate based off of race or income, right? And so, as schools, I don't, it's big is the question, why are we doing that with schools if we're talking about income? And so, I'm sure that one will come back to haunt me, but it's just, I think it's important that we address the issue, you know, and it's important that we talk about it. Because if I'm wrong, I wanna know, right? And I want, I want us to be able to, to work through it. I think that the way that it's projected, I, I don't, it, it's good, but it's, we can do way better. So, those are my thoughts on it.
Director Green?
Um, this is my third boundary change since I've been on this board. Um, actually, my fourth boundary change since I've been on this board, and each and every one of them are difficult and hard, and we always make somebody mad. I, the only one that I can ever think of where people were happy was Middle Grove, when we closed Middle Grove and moved those families in there Cesar Chavez, because they wanted a school that looked like Cesar Chavez, not like Middle Grove. And that's the only time I've ever had, uh, anybody ever stand up and clap when we made a boundary change. These are tough decisions, and I think there's a couple of realities that Salem Kaiser needs to come face-to-face with. One, we have not recognized that the demographics of our district have shifted. Ten years ago, sixty-five percent of our students were white. Ten years ago, 65% of our students were white. Now we are a majority-minority school district, and we have not come to grips with that district-wide. You look at the makeup of our teaching force, no penalties against our teaching force, but even at our most diverse high schools that we have, 87% of our teachers are white. And yes, Benny was right, you're looking at a white school board here, and I hope, I'm not running again for my board seat, and I hope we get a person of color to run for my board seat, because I think it's important for students of color to see leaders who look like them. So we need teachers, we need administrators, we need school board members. But I can tell you, the biggest thing that Salem Kaiser hasn't faced yet is what Oregon hasn't faced yet, we don't have the resources for our schools. We are $2 billion underfunded according to the quality education model. The quality education model sets school sizes, ideal school sizes, for the best learning for high schools at 1,000 students. And every 250 kids should have a counselor. That doesn't happen at any high school in this district. We don't face the fact that we have changed as a district, and we have not faced the fact that we underfund our schools dramatically in this state. And it is a cause and effect. You can see it every day in every school across this state, and it has played out in our schools in this district as well. I represent the Sprague area, my kids go to Sprague, so when I hear things that Sprague parents and Sprague kids don't want those kids there, that's problematic. And I hope Larry Ramirez and Craig Swanson, Larry's our director of high schools, Craig Swanson's the principal, and I hope our superintendent and our other high school principals get together and have nights about diversity, ethnicity, and inclusivity. We did it for suicide, we need to do it for our student population. Unfortunately, the bond we passed was what was politically practical and politically doable. We did extensive polling on what would voters in Salem support. And I can tell you, as I've traveled around this district and gone to workshops, and was at West Salem, and was at McNary, and I was at McKay, every school in this district needs some work, some way, somehow. Whether it's increasing class size and classrooms, whether it is HVAC systems, or whether it's new windows, or whether it's a new gymnasium, or a new library, each and every building in our school district needs something, and we did the best we could at $620 million. And I can tell you this, there is not buildable land within our city to put a new high school right now. That's another problem we need to come to grips with. Schools are not involved in the land use planning decisions in this state. When we put together plans on where communities are going to be built, guess what is left out of that discussion? Schools. We should have a seat at the table when they're going to plan new developments. We should have a seat at the table and talk about inclusivity and zoning. We should talk about where we're going to build free and reduce housing costs for our people in our city, so that we don't have these economic diversities across our district. The other things, there are things out of our control. Salem City Council last night took a vote to not build a third bridge. That impacts our ability to do anything in West Salem. I defy you to drive a school bus across those bridges in the morning or in the evening. It creates a barrier for us. We need to be involved in those discussions. I really want to thank Adriana and Adam and the rest of the Boundary Committee that did yeoman's work on this, and we pulled it back twice. We've got five iterations of it that were not perfect, I know that, but we're the best we can do with what we've got given to us. But I would encourage us to look at our bond, and look at how we're going to be able to, and remember, we are somewhat limited because we did have a voter-approved bond, and we've got to go with what's in that bond language so that we don't go outside the law. But I would encourage us to get greater diversity on our CBAC, looking down the list of folks that are on our CBAC, that's our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, get students involved in that, get some greater diversity involved in that, and look at opportunities to increase expenditures in the high schools that need it. And one high school that was never mentioned tonight, and I don't ever want to forget about, is Roberts. Roberts are our most needy students in this district, and we forget about them all the time. Their graduation rate is 11%. We need to make resources available where they need to be for kids. When we look at things with an equity lens as a school board, we need to take a look at being sure equity is equity and not equitable. Equity is addressing the needs of those underserved populations that have been traditionally underserved. We need to address the resources that we need to have in this district to ensure we're having equity. We need the best and the brightest teachers in our most troubled schools. We need more resources in our most troubled schools. And I would encourage the superintendent and our CBAC to look at that as we move forward. But I do really encourage our high school feeders districts and their principals to have those workshops on inclusivity, diversity, ethnicity within our school district. We have not recognized that. We've done it on suicide preventions for our youth, which is ultimately important as well, but we need to have these conversations with our staff, with our communities, with our parents, and more importantly, with our students. I'm a graduate of Sprague High School, and when I hear things that Sprague doesn't want those kids, that's not what we're about at Sprague, and that's not what we're about in this school district. So, I will support this, but I do want to see some changes, take a look at what we can do in the bond, and see what we can do in the CBAC. But we need to come to grips with our community, we need to come to grips with the fact that there are just not enough resources, and I hope you will all support the proposal that's coming up later, so that we do see that come from the legislature. It's time to fund our schools.
Are there other comments, Sharon?
Well, it's certainly hard to top that, but I do want to, because I represent South...
Does he want to say something?
Do you want to tell, can you tell him to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Chair, Chair Goss, I'm watching this on CCTV right now, and believe me, I think you'd be pleased that I'm not there because I'm very sick, but I am getting a kick out of looking at my vacancy.
Chair?
On the TV screen? I would just really like to say a couple of things, if this is appropriate time for me to do so.
I think because he's on TV, he's getting feedback between the two.
He'll watch TV, Chuck.
I'm not really hearing much of it, Chair Goss, but hopefully you can hear these words that I'm saying right now. First of all, I echo Jim Green's comments. Jim, we are indebted to your leadership and your wisdom and your sense of history on the school board, and you'll be missed very much, but I think your comments have really got everything set on.
I was watching tonight and very impressed with all of the testimony that we heard, it was heartfelt, I heard it, and I think that as a board, it's very important for us to follow it through on the concerns as far as equity and equality and all of those good points that were made. I am supporting the adoption of the boundary recommendation tonight, and I really want to thank the chairs for the fine work that they did, and the community that came together to help make this recommendation. So I'll be supporting this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Director Blasey.
So one of the things I heard tonight repeatedly was, the recommendations just aren't quite good enough, and, but I also heard the concerns, and we've heard this, going through this process, from the parents and the families and the students who would be bused, and I agree that that is, that's not the solution. But for the board member who represents South Salem High School, and looking at the projected numbers, you know, the idea behind this was that we would add capacity to all of our schools, and we would provide a more equitable distribution of resources across the district. And we're not quite there. So I really struggle with, with how to vote on this, but, because I'm representing South, and we are projected to be at 103%, even with the bond, I really struggle with that. And the piece that I keep bringing up is, you know, South High School and the South community is incredibly welcoming, and it is very diverse. It's just like McKay and North, and, and we, all of us learn from the diversity, and I just, I really struggle with the fact that we're, we're not quite there. I understand that this is tough and challenging, but we need, we need to get there. And having a school, a high school, that is very diverse, and I'm not talking just about racially diverse, I'm talking about economically diverse, we do struggle every day with the resources inside the school. And so, the current proposal, the way that the schools are shifting, although that adds to the beauty of the school, it also comes with resource challenges. And I've asked about, how do we address that? So if we're going to put South High School, and McNary, and McKay, and North above 100% capacity, how are we going to support that? And how are we going to support those students? So, the current proposal is to, to move, you know, Marier and Four Corners to South. Again, they will be very, very welcomed, but we need the support there. And, and unfortunately, that's not part of this discussion. So I'm really struggling with where the numbers play out over the next 10 years, and I just don't think we're quite there. I don't think that this, these recommendations, although very, very well attended, or intended, very well thought out, and the fact that the committee went back to the schools and had these conversations, I applaud you. However, I don't think it quite does what we intended and what we promised the voters. You know, I knocked on a lot of doors, as Lillian mentioned a couple weeks ago, and I told voters in my community that we were going to reduce capa, we were going to provide adequate resources at South High School, and this doesn't quite do that. So, I asked the question last time about, did we consider one school going to Sprague? I understand that that's not a really great option, but have we considered one going to South and one going to North? I just don't know that we've completely looked at all of the options to get that capacity below 100%. So, I, I'm not sure that I can support this, although I know we need to move forward, I just feel as though we need to, you know, take a, take a stand for, for those schools that aren't quite getting what we, what we intended through this bond, so.
Director Kyle.
Having attended the Boundary Meetings, I know that a lot of the concerns were discussed and explored, and a lot of these concerns that I'm hearing expressed now, if, if board members had been in attendance at those meetings, they would have had those concerns addressed, and they would have heard the discussion. I would applaud the Boundary Committee for their forward-thinking and their insightful thoughts, and some, at points contentious discussions, that they were able to come up with these recommendations, and I think that they are worthy of our support. I would also remind people that we have a budget process, and that on April 24th, 23rd, we will be hearing from the superintendent and her vision for the district, and hopefully some of the changes and the pieces that we're being, we're discussing, we will see there. And hopefully, the people in this room, the passion that's expressed, they will show up at the budget hearings and share their thoughts, so that at that point, the budget can be looked at, and that is, again, another community group that then makes a recommendation back to this board, and we take testimony from the citizens, so hopefully they will look and come back, and we will see them again.
Thank you. Jesse.
Well, first, I'd just like to say that although not all of the board members were at the Boundary Review Meetings, a lot of us were talking to community members, spending time out there in schools, visiting the schools, talking with teachers, talking with parents, and I think being out there in the trenches, talking to people, and hearing what they have to say is just as good as attending the meetings.
And... I do the same thing.
You know, and I appreciate that, I'm not, yeah, I really appreciate you, Paul. But I would also like to say, a lot of these concerns have been ones that I've brought up in several meetings, and every time I get an answer, that's an answer, but it doesn't really truly answer my question. And I'm not trying to downplay it at all, I mean, I know I got every, an answer, I just didn't think it was adequate. But I have a few questions for Mike. Can you take them?
I'm here.
Before we get into that, I'm the last board member that has had an opportunity to speak and put my two cents in, and I'm going to go ahead and do that. And I think it's valuable, if you think back as to how we got into this situation. The city of Salem has land use planning, I'm sure you've heard of that, and you've heard of urban growth boundaries. And one of the reasons McKay has gotten so big is because they had buildable ground in that area. So people built, and people have children, and they go to those schools. And what has happened at Sprague is there is not buildable land there, and it's much more expensive, and part of that has nothing to do with people standing back and saying, let's charge more there, it has to do with the geography. It's got big hills and valleys, and so people that can afford to have gone there and built, but there isn't any more room. So we end up with a whole lot of kids at McKay and in the central core of the city, and that's not an easy, easy thing to solve. We have to work on that. But that's not all that we have to work at. We have things we need to work at for all children in the district. One is that we have far too many kids in classes, we've heard that all evening. Kids don't have room to sit, they don't have room to have their lunch, they don't have an adequate cafeteria. Some of our elementary schools were not built with any cafeterias at all, and so those kids are bringing their snack lunches every day. But there's lots of those things that have to be solved district-wide. And the other thing that I've thought about quite a bit is that a lot of this is connected to the financial, the financial position of Oregon and the economy we have right now. And it's put us in the hole, and it's put us in the hole since 2008, and that's when Measure 5 occurred. And Measure 5 changed the taxing, and I know this isn't very interesting, but it all has to do with that thing, but it has shorted our schools continually. So, we haven't built another high school. It just boggles my mind, but a new high school would have almost taken half of the $617 million. So what, what are we going to do? And what, what the staff recommended is that we keep what we have, and we try and fill a lot of those holes all throughout the city. And I think sometimes it hasn't come up even, even, and we have to solve that. But I am so grateful that you came... But I am so grateful that you came, appeared at this meeting, gave us your thoughts, and I can promise you, we'll address them. And we don't want to put you in the position, or anybody in the position, of sending their kids off to a school where they feel, where they feel entirely alone. That isn't what we want to do either. So we will work on all of those things and see what we can do to make our entire district more inclusive, more, more amenities for kids and less bus time. Well, time to move on.
Jesse has some questions.
Jesse.
So I just had a few, because as, as I was looking at the numbers, and I know we've gone over a lot of this stuff, but a lot of people didn't get to hear it because they don't go to all the meetings. Yes, that's not their job. So one of my questions is, we, we talked a lot about, as, as people were talking, about meeting students where they're at instead of having us shipped across town or having them meet with us where we're at, right? There was a lot of that from the community. So I guess my question would be, what have we done with the Boundary Review, just so people can hear, to meet students where they're at? What have we done to use the equity lens in the process?
Not exact, can you restate that? I'm not, what is the question specifically? So I'm having a hard time tracking.
Oh, just, what has the district done as we go through the process to use the equity lens to meet students where they're at?
So how did we use the equity lens?
Sure.
Basically? Yes. You know, we had, you all, you have your binders, so you can flip through if you'd like, but we have the actual, the equity lens, the equity focus that we've used at the task force. We also have the guiding principles and we've expanded on those so that basically it was a framework to have the conversations and ask the questions around, hey, what are really the impacts of these decisions? And have we involved the people, right, who will be impacted the most? And so that's where, that's what drove a lot of the conversations internally with the task force.
Do you feel like we've done that?
I, I feel like the task force has met the superintendent's charge. And one of the elements of the superintendent's charge was to basically make sure that we're engaging the underserved populations in this decision, in this recommendation process. And so I, I do. I also think that it's, it's a very high standard and one that we need to continue to work on. It's hard to meet everyone, right? It's hard to engage everyone. And so there were multiple opportunities along the way. And I, I could reiterate all of the thousands of, you know, surveys and all of that, but just so you know that that was part of it. And the task force took themselves on in a way that I haven't, I've been doing this for a long time as well. I have not seen a group of volunteers take themselves on this way. And it wasn't easy and it shouldn't be. These are really tough and impactful conversations. It's not a perfect solution. One thing that I, I would like to highlight, go to the website, look at the information, the five-year point in 2022 was not the horizon for the boundary change. It's the 10-year. It's 2027. Now, again, still doesn't matter when you're looking at 2027 and you're at 100 percent capacity. Totally understand that. This task force, nor the bond, was never intended to go out 20, 25 years. That's, that's a billion-plus dollars to handle those types of needs. And so as Jim, Director Green said, you all had to size this one appropriately, and even that wasn't a perfect solution. But we're heading towards making positive decisions and positive outcomes. For the students and the conversations that you all had tonight are very reflective of the equity lens.
Okay, awesome. And then I just have two more. One is, do you believe that there is an advantage to having a school that's under capacity by a larger amount than? Like, do you believe that the lower the capacity is, do you, do you believe that there's an advantage to that?
Not offhand, not offhand. Now, if you ask me, do I believe that there's an advantage to not being overcrowded? I would say yes, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
So you don't think that Sprague or West are going to have any advantage over McKay or North due to capacity?
I think what, I think where the advantage comes from is the teachers and the instruction and the culture. It's not the building, it's what happens in the building. Now, having said that, when you look across the horizon for the, the next 10 years and you see two high schools that are projected to be under capacity and the other four are going to be right at the capacity, I think that's worth a, I think that's worth a conversation. And that's what I'm hearing from the board tonight.
Yeah. And then I just, one more, and thank you for answering. I know it's a tough spot, but I appreciate that. So if the estimates from flow analytics are wrong, because right, if we're looking at, because I'm looking at the 10-year, 2027, right? When we're looking at South Salem, it's looking at, like, it's 99.9 percent and the magnitude over and under, over by two. So we're giving them like a negative two margin of error here. And so if this is wrong by a few percentage points, that could add like 100 kids, I'm not showing the exact number, don't quote me on that. But the point is, a lot of these schools have under 100 as the, our margin of error. You know, if the, if this flow analytics is wrong, while Sprague and West Salem have over 300 each of margin of error for, if we're wrong there. And so my question for that is if these numbers are wrong, and we've seen from past elections that polling can be wrong, do you believe that, well, can we adjust for that in five, six, or seven, or eight and a half years from now, if it changes?
Yeah, I think so. And I, and I would say that there's, these are projection models that take in a lot of information, demographics, census data, growth projections and all of that. So it isn't necessarily, I wouldn't equate that, this projection with a poll, but I understand your question. I understand the question behind it. What I would say is, none of these models take into account events like the Great Recession or a 9/11. So are there things in the next 10 years that can happen that can completely skew these projections? Absolutely, there are. And to the extent that they happen, hopefully not, the district has the flexibility, again, to go in and adjust accordingly. So in other words, if we see the growth shooting up in areas that, that wasn't projected, then of course, we monitor annually the capacity and the enrollment of each school. We did that before the bond. We do that and we will continue to do that as we implement the boundary changes. One of the reasons that we've discussed some of the how to implement, and we really hadn't talked about the other recommendations besides the changes to the boundaries, but I think it's important for the, the board to at least review the recommendations, the additional task force recommendations besides the boundary changes, because that's where we're talking about how we're implementing. And just to give you an example, I'm not going to go over the whole sheet, but just to give you an example, to help mitigate the changes in our communities, right? Remember, busing is critical. And so by passing the boundary changes tonight, and there's also a resolution to spend contingency funds, right, so that we can go buy the buses to make this happen, right? Like tomorrow, we'll put the purchase order in for this if in fact it's approved, is because transportation is critical. A continuity exemption that says you can stay as a fourth or fifth grader in your school or a junior or a senior, but you have to transport yourself, isn't really available to all families. And so this recommendation changes that and provides transportation to stay. And the, the implementation of the boundaries to modify and mitigate the impact affects incoming, remember fall of 19, incoming kinder, first, second, and third graders will go to their new schools. Incoming sixth graders and incoming ninth graders will go to their new schools. The other grades will stay from a continuity perspective with transportation, and that's incredibly important as an additional recommendation outside of the changes to the schools.
Well, thank you for the answer. And I do just want to say, really, make it really clear that I'm not, this, the proposal by the task force was made with all great intention, great heart, and it's not a bad proposal, right? It's, I think we can all agree to that, it's way better than what we're currently doing. I just think we can do better. And so I, I'm, when I, me voting no isn't me voting saying this is bad, it's saying that we can do better. And I would like to postpone the, the vote for this because it's, I just, I just think we could, we could do, we could do better than this.
Can I ask, can I have you just outline kind of the, the couple of the recommendations around the few schools and how that intersects with the Community Bond Oversight Committee work as well?
Yes. So if you look at the projections for Miller Elementary School, you'll see that Miller is projected to be over about 133 percent currently and in the future. And so part of the focus of the task force was what to do about that. And, because that's a big deal. I mean, we're talking about 125 students over capacity in 10 years at Miller. And so that's where a lot of the boundary changes were at least looked at. And ultimately, the task force made the recommendation to leave Miller, current boundaries as they are, but to recommend a capital project improvement. So basically, we're talking about adding a, a pod of classes there, classrooms. So that's an example of how the boundary process has recognized the need for additional capital investments with the bond. And so Miller is one, Kennedy is another. Those two add up to about $11.5 million that CIBOC has concurred with the Boundary Task Force recommendations. So we were able to roll that through. There are three other schools that were identified. We didn't, we were still doing the cost estimating at the time, but that's Mary Air, Grant, and Halk Middle School also need additional capacity given the boundary changes. And that adds up to another 8.5 million. So the total of five schools, two additional projects that aren't currently in the bond, and expanded scope of three that are, as far as capital improvements, is $20 million. Okay?
Are there other questions? Marty?
I got an email from a parent that was concerned about Pringle being at 103 percent now and in the future, that that wasn't changing. And I'm basically asking for this parent, what was the reason for this decision?
Again, Pringle Elementary was talked about in the task force many times. And so one of the, one of the, when you're, when you look at, assuming that we're not going to be busing across the city, right? When you look at balancing between feeder systems, Sprague and North, one of the typical places, areas to look is right along the borders between those two feeder systems. And Pringle Elementary is clearly right along the border. So that was a discussion within the task force about shifting some of Pringle into the Sprague feeder system. And we listened to our community across the board and the feedback we received from that segment of the community in that area of the city was, don't do that. And so the task force took a look at that. Now, what that means, there are consequences for making decisions or not making decisions. One of the consequences for Pringle is the fact that its boundary did not change and that it is projected to be one of our largest elementary schools now and in the future in the 10-year period. So yes, when you talk about 103 percent, we're talking about 24 students over capacity in 10 years. So 24 out of 715 students. So that, just to give you an order of magnitude when we're talking about a situation.
But that was kind of the consensus of the people from that area attending the meetings, that that was what they preferred, correct?
Well, here's the difference. Let me talk about that a little bit. There's a difference between having a school, right, within its capacity versus class size. Okay? And so, right, so the school is within its capacity as designed, but that doesn't mean that those parents don't feel the pressure of class sizes or the fact that I think this year or last year, this year was about 60 additional students than what was projected actually walked through the front door. And so that's an immediate overcrowding feel in, in a school like Pringle. So the question, similar to the high schools, is if, again, if the board wants staff to make some recommendations about looking at a school like Pringle as far as additional capacity, I see that as no different of the conversation than what you've been having with respect to the high schools.
Thank you. Chair Blasi.
So, so on that note, you know, we've obviously been wrestling with all of the comments and, and as I mentioned, I have struggled with this, not just this evening, but it just, again, it goes back to what we, what we promised the voters and what I see, you know, in my community at South and just still struggling with where we're projected to be. And, and as you just described, one of our, you know, feeder schools is going to be above capacity as well. So I know we don't have a lot of time, but I really, really would have liked to have had an opportunity, come to the district and say, what can we do just a little different? Not to take away from the task force and the work that they did, because I, I think they did a, a really great job, especially in the listening, but it's, we're, we're just not quite there, so.
And, sorry, one more thing. I know that Natalie has gotten beat up quite a bit tonight and I would like to say thank you. Not that everybody agrees with what you wrote or appreciated it, but the fact is, you got us all in the room talking about this. You got all of these people here, whether they agree with what you said or whether they like the Statesman Journal or whatever, but you got all these people here and we didn't. You did, so thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Madam Chair, you have a motion and a second on, on the adoption of the recommendation?
Did you have anything else to say, Mike, before we went into that?
Absolutely nothing.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
There's already been a motion and a second, Madam Chair.
So you're just, now you've had a decision.
It's time for a vote.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm running out of steam. Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, Chuck, I remember now it was-
Director Kylo, Director Kylo made the motion, Director Green seconded it.
I got it.
Correct, Alice?
Hey, it's late.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay. We'll call for a vote. And the vote is, right, all in favor? Does everyone understand what we're voting on? Are we voting on accepting the program as is? Are we voting on accepting it subject to making some changes or?
No, Madam Chair, the motion was adoption as recommended.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
What, who is?
Lipold and Blasi are opposed.
And Chuck?
He voted aye.
Aye?
I voted, I voted aye.
Okay. I'll vote aye also. Motion passes. Okay. We do have to finish the action items. And the next is by adoption for authorizing agreement of a request from the City of Salem. That's on a multi-housing development in an urban renewal area downtown.
Madam Chair, I would move adoption of Resolution Number 201819-4, authorizing agreement of request from the City of Salem to the Salem Kaiser School District taxing district.
Is there a second? Director Blasi in favor? Oh, Marty?
Discussion?
Yeah.
So please clarify again, what happens to the money in a yes vote and what happens to the money in a no vote?
Okay. So this development is in an urban renewal area. And so by definition, the tax base is frozen. So there's no immediate impact to the district's revenue because of this vote, yes or no. In other words, you wouldn't, we wouldn't be losing any of the tax money because we're frozen at the base, tax base, when the urban renewal area was established. So that's one. So that's one, okay? If, so 51% or more of the taxing jurisdictions need to concur with the city's decision to provide a tax exemption for the developer to receive the full 100% of the tax exemption. To, to reach that 51%, the city represents 29% of, of the total taxation base, taxing jurisdictions, and we represent 23%. So if the board approves this or concurs with the dis, or the city's decision, then the developer receives 100% of the tax abatement or exemption. If the board does not, they only receive the city's portion, which is 29%. So the difference is between 100% or 29%.
But if it's not changing their taxes, where does the money go? Because it doesn't go to us regardless.
It goes to the, it goes to the urban renewal area. It's, and to the extent that values increase, that's the tax increment financing that the urban renewals, the areas use to invest and create a higher tax base, so that when the urban renewal area has lived through its lifespan, all of the taxing jurisdictions receive the higher base over the period of.
So a yes vote gives them the tax where they don't have to pay those taxes, but a no vote, they pay our portion, but it gets reinvested into the urban renewal. Is that correct?
Yes, so a yes.
Just in general, I mean.
Yep, yep. I think you're close on that one.
I don't think my brain could handle anything more than a general.
I'm with you, I'm with you on that one.
Okay. Just a quick comment, I mentioned this before, going back to urban renewal, that the idea behind urban renewal area, especially in the downtown core, was, and it literally, I served on the planning commission for a while, and it literally says to reduce urban blight. And in this particular area, the urban blight was identified about 10 years ago. It was the, the paper mill that sat there empty for years and years and years and years. And this was, you know, developed as, as an incentive to encourage developers to come in and do some infill in a downtown area to encourage downtown living, downtown working. You know, if you look at this particular urban renewal area, it talks a lot about what it was intended to do, and it was to create an environment, you know, a livable, walkable, and no, this is not low-income, multi-housing, but it is multi-housing. So, you know, there, there's lots of debate and discussion about urban renewal areas. But if you lived in Salem 20 years ago and you remember what downtown was like, it is so different now. And it's a place that we like to go and enjoy, and we want this to be a livable community for our kids. We want them to stay here so they can take care of us when we're old. And so we need, so again, bigger, bigger picture on this.
Another, another one that has gone on in Salem that's popular is Broadway Street. And you have a older theater, a theater that's new, but, but shows older movies. You have all kinds of food things there. The church has expanded into a coffee shop there. None of that would have happened had urban renewal not triggered some investment.
Paul has a question.
Oh, Paul?
I would also, I want to make sure I understand, Mike, our 23% actually is 71%. Because if we vote yes, then all of the other jurisdictions have to go along with this. So our 23% is worth 71% to the developer.
Yes. Yeah, ultimately.
Yeah.
Yeah, ultimately, so.
And we don't know for sure if the other jurisdictions have been contacted.
Actually, we do. The developer called and said that they took it upon themselves to reach out to each of the taxing jurisdictions. And the feedback that he provided to me was that, at least his recollection was that they were fine with it.
Call for a vote. Jesse?
Yeah, so about a year ago, we were asked to do the same thing for, it was a Catholic church, right, for low-income housing?
Catholic housing.
Catholic housing, yeah. And we, of course, we approved that because it's, it's to help those who actually, who really need it. This is, I, I, while I understand the supply and demand of, of the real estate industry, it's, it shouldn't be, I don't believe that it should be, I don't believe that government's always the answer. Now, I do believe that we need more apartments downtown. I believe that our housing costs are too high. I believe that we're getting in the way, and then we're also offering the solution. And so when, when it comes to these apartments, this is someone who can already afford and get a loan for building an apartment, building downtown, right? On top of the tax incentives that they're already getting for being in an urban, whatever zone. And then on top of that, we're like, hey, here's an extra $714,240, just because you're rich, so thank you. And of course, that's not what we say, but it's, in reality, that's what it does. So if you're someone trying to come out of poverty, right, if you're, if you're looking to make it in the world and you want to invest into, in real estate, or which is the biggest industry in the world, this makes it hard because it became, it becomes a game of monopoly, right? If you don't know to go to government bodies and ask them for tax exemptions, how the hell are you supposed to make it? And I apologize for my French, but it's, it's, this is, in the, I, I understand we've done this before, because our mayor wrote that it was precedent, and he gives four examples. But I believe that this is bad precedent. I don't believe that is true capitalism. I don't think that's true, I don't think that's really American. I think we have to take care of the, those who need it. And then for those who are trying to make a business investment like this, this is a business investment. It's not low-income housing. This is not a nonprofit. And while I respect and I appreciate the person for asking, because I would, I don't think it's the right thing to do. And I know it's unpopular position, but we have to have a safety net for people, right? And we're not, if the city, even though it's not going all directly to us, this goes to our community. Our state, our state, our city, our school systems are always asking us for money. And then we're giving it to these guys who are building apartment buildings. Now, I'm pro-business, right? But this is, this is ripping off the little guy, is what, is what it seems like to me. And I agree that we need more apartment buildings downtown, but we can just make it easier to build. And so I, if we say yes on this, and if we vote this in, I urge you to also vote yes when I come to you asking for $714,240. So that way I can make a buttload of cash off of you guys, too.
Call for a vote.
Call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Say, all those in favor of approving this housing development, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Ask Chuck.
Chuck?
Okay, the.
We have Chuck on the phone.
Chuck, you break the tie.
I don't know if he's there.
He's still there? Alice is.
I don't think he's there.
I don't, yeah. I don't know if he's there. Chuck? Director Lee?
I do not think he's there, so we.
That's for hand vote.
So what?
Hand vote, so we can.
Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
Now raise your hand.
Aye. Raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Appears to be three to three.
So it fails.
Motion fails.
That's one win.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'll move, I change my vote to no and serve notice of a possible reconsideration on this vote. You have to vote on the prevailing side in order to serve reconsideration. I change my vote to no and serve notice of possible reconsideration.
Okay. So we're voting on whether.
No, we're not voting on anything. I just changed my vote to no. The vote now is four to two. And I've served notice of reconsideration, so the next time we have a business meeting, I would need to bring it forward if I wanted to.
All right. Howard Street Charter School is the next action item. We have the opportunity to approve their new financing arrangements, and we've had that to read previously.
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hello?
Hi, Chuck. We can hear you now.
I'm sorry?
Can you hear us?
For what it was, for what it was worth, I voted aye on the last measure.
So the ayes would have passed.
But it doesn't count.
The vote was taken.
Yeah, the vote was taken. I think we, it's.
We'll need to take it up at our next business meeting.
Yeah, okay, we will do that. Okay, back to the Howard Street Charter School.
Just, just as a point of information, I think I might have to sign out of this meeting because CCTV has stopped broadcasting the school board meetings. So I, I don't, I don't have any way of keeping track of what, what you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Tom, we have two more items.
We have two more items. You can participate if you can hear us and the audience can hear you.
All right. Okay. Oh, you just, you just came back on.
All right. Chuck, can you hear me?
Sure.
Chuck, we still need to vote on the Howard Street Charter School agreement for financing.
So they were here and there.
I'm happy to tee this up and then turn it over to Howard Street to answer any questions that you might have. So this has come back to the board, right? You've had other proposals from Howard Street. I want to call your attention, this one involves two requested changes. You'll see them in the center of the board plate. The first is that Howard Street would like their charter amended to increase the total population in their charter from 180 students to 200. The second, they would still remain at 85% allocation funding, so that, that doesn't change from the current contract, but from 180 to 200 students. The second is the intercept agreement language that was talked about at the last proposal as well. So that's still in here. And I'm happy to turn this over to Howard Street so that they might answer any questions. I just want to highlight that these are the two changes, from 180 to 200 students, and the intercept agreement language. And the funding stays at the 85% ADMW allocation.
Can I just make a motion? I mean, I don't get it all. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposal brought forward by Howard Street Charter School.
Second?
Is there any discussion?
So you, I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing from me, but thank you. I, I fully support this proposal, but I, I am going to ask again, and I'm probably going to be asking district staff really to take a look at when we sign contracts with charter schools, and not just Howard Street, but this has really brought to light the, I hate to keep saying this, but the lack of diversity in your student population. And I know that you have told us that you have, you know, it's, it is a lottery system, but we keep asking about equity and how you go about encouraging equity in your student population. And your last proposal was that you were going to purchase a property downtown, and that was going to address your equity issue. I would say to you that that's not quite enough. And so I think moving forward, as we look at our contracts with our charter schools, we're going to be asking the districts to look at your demographics, and not your scatter plot of where your families live in the city, but the economic and the racial makeup of your student population, and what can you do to encourage or make your school more, more equitable? And again, this is not just directed at Howard Street. It's, I think we need to take a close look at this for all of our schools. But I do appreciate this proposal and support it. And I do support your school. You guys are, you do a really, really fantastic job. I just want to see you do it for all of our students.
I don't know if you want me to speak to that tonight. We have been doing some work on that, and I'd be happy to talk to you as an individual if you would prefer.
Yeah, that would be great, thank you. Yeah, and we've helped them get some technical assistance around the weighted lottery system, and they have, are really going to work on that. And might be one of the first schools in the state, charter schools in the state to work on that, so.
Big, Director Kylo, you have a question?
I do. And so what's the percentage of the OFA funding that we'll be sending? If we do go with the intercept agreement, what's the percentage out of your 85% that we'll be sending?
What is the percentage? It depends on what our approval is through OFA, but at this time, we are looking at a bond of 3.5 million, and that comes out at an annual amount of 215,000.
And what percentage is that? Because since you're only going to be getting 85%, I was going to ask, how do you plan on continuing your programs at the same level with this reduced amount? Is that 15%? So you're going to be doing it at 70%?
Have, have you seen our performa that we sent to the board?
So I saw that you're reducing salaries.
We are making changes in both construction. We are also reducing FTE. We're hoping for an increase in enrollment, and we also have been making costs internally.
So you're going for larger class sizes? Okay, just wanted to make sure. So, so all of the noise we heard about your smaller class sizes is to be ignored now?
I, on average, our class size will be 32, so that's still smaller than some classes, yes.
Okay.
Director Green?
So Madam Chair, I asked a series of questions last time with regard to finances, and I did receive the information that they sent us, but I have the same concerns that Director Kylo does, because what Howard Street has always sold themselves off on is class size, opportunities, staffing, and a variety of things. And if you look at their proposal, what they've done is increased class size from 30 to 32, reduced staff from a payroll and costs, or just salaries, of 1.4 million to 845,000. So they're reducing the number of adults impacting education for students. They're going to change the structure of their program by eliminating any elective that doesn't have 20 students. That's always been one of their big selling points, is that they have electives that draw kids into their program. They look to also further cuts to lower construction costs, but any facility they go into that's going to have 192 students needs to meet state and federal guidelines for students to be safe. So I don't see how construction costs are going to be lowered. And they're also looking for donations. And in my 20-year history of working with charter schools, no charter school has ever hit their donation requirement that they've ever asked for. In addition, they're looking for donation of potential materials. Hopefully, that's classroom materials and not building materials, because that would violate ORS Chapter 279(c), which they have to be in compliance with. I have grave concerns about their financial ability to meet this, and I'll be voting no.
Are we calling for a vote at this point?
I have a question.
Jesse?
What will happen if this was voted down today?
Then we're going to go back to probably about Plan K or 14, 15. We are, we believe that this is another solution to move forward, and if we have to go back and rework, then we go back and rework again.
What do you think would happen to these teachers and their salaries if we voted no? And what, if you guys don't find the funding?
You, there's, we've always known that funding is an issue for not just charter schools, but all schools. And we have continued to work through those program-wise. Most of our teachers are direct hires of Howard Street, so there are options that they could be looking for other unemployment if they wished. But I really believe that this is a solution that meets what the board has asked of us. And it is not in, have an additional component asking for additional funding from you from a 5% as we have asked from before, so it's not an ADMW increase. We've provided you with the performa to show the next five years, but we've done 35-year projections and have been working with both financial advisors as well as OFA to say that, yes, this can work.
Thank you.
Call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye and raising their hand. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, one, two, three, four. Chuck? Chuck?
I'm a no.
Four, three.
No. Both three. Motion, motion. Oh, three, motion, motion passes.
Motion does pass, four, three.
Thank you.
Chair Goss, you did get my no vote, correct?
Yes.
He's a no.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. We're down to the adopt resolution number 201819-5, authorizing budgetary transfer appropriations for fiscal year 1819.
I move adoption of the, of the resolution 201819-5, authorizing budgetary transfers of appropriations.
And Chuck has seconded. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and.
I think it was Director Kylo who seconded. And you'll need to call for, you'll need to call for discussion.
Discussion, which we just had.
We're just discussing right now.
Discussion. Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye, please.
Aye.
Two, three, four, five, six.
Seven.
And Chuck?
Seven.
Seven.
Aye.
Seven oh, it passes unanimously. We're down on action item F, adopt resolution number 201819-6, which is the statewide supportive adequate state funding for education.
Madam Chair, I would move adoption of resolution 201819-6 in support of adequate state funding for education.
Second.
Okay, this is the one I personally am against, and.
I think we need to ask for discussion from everyone first.
Ask for discussion besides me. Okay, I.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This goes to the heart of the issue I spoke about earlier and that we had testimony on from our classified employees and our certified employees. It's one of the issues that is facing not only Salem Kaiser, but all school districts in the state. As I said before, we are $2 billion short of where we need to be, and we've known it for 20 years now. And this is an opportunity for this school board to stand up with our support professionals and our teachers and our administrators to tell the legislature, it's time to do the right thing for kids. And I'm very much in support of this.
Director Hagan Hyen? I'm sorry.
I'm in support of this as in I want consistent funding and I want better funding for our schools. I just want to point out, though, that I, I don't really agree with the first paragraph. Ballot measure five is the reason I can still live in my home, unlike people in Seattle whose property taxes went up so much that seniors who own their homes outright had to move because they can no longer afford the property taxes. Also, other things have gotten us to this particular circumstance, including the loss of our timber industry and the 19% increase in PERS. I think our state government needs to look at PERS and come up with some solutions. It's a crisis for every agency that uses PERS. And don't get the idea I'm against PERS. I'm a tier-one retiree, right? You know, and I want PERS to be there for, for me and for you. But they need to do something about it. So I just want to get that out there. I will vote for it, but those things are part of the problem.
Director LeCoe?
Guys, I'm a little hyped up today. I apologize for that. I'm just going to say that, I mean, since I've been alive, you know, PERS is, PERS was an issue made, a deal made before I was born. And we're all still having, our kids now are still having to suffer the consequences because of it, right? And I want the focus on this. I'm, I'm sick of the excuses, to be perfectly frank. I mean, we're, we're looking at this, we, we got to think about kids, and we got to think about our future. When I'm looking at, hey, are we going to spend money on something? I view it as an investment. What do we, what, what are they getting back? What is our community getting back? And since education is a positive externality on the economy, there's no reason as to why we shouldn't be funding education. It's preventative to so many things. And I'm just going to keep it short and say, quote Nelson Mandela, and say that education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world.
Okay, I'll start again. I'm opposing the motion, and it's certainly not because I don't care for kids and I don't care for staff. I most certainly do. I respect staff tremendously. I taught for many years myself. And why I don't like this is that it says that due to measure five. Well, measure five was about 30 years ago, and it's been amended at least four times that I'm aware of. And I would like to put the other reasons we're short of money for kids, which is, again, what we're talking about tonight overall. I would like to say that this does not identify anything but measure five. And I would like it to say due to measure five. And I'll take that comma and PERS and as well as timber harvesting. And as well, we are no longer getting money from severance tax on land that was turned over from the railroad. And we've lost that. I think we absolutely must push the state to look at those things. And the state will refuse to look at PERS until we've tackled that issue. And that's between Senator Kotek as well as, as well as the governor, Kate Brown. So I'm going to push back on this. Until we start pushing back as educators, the state is not going to move. Any other comments?
So I worked with the, the entities listed here to draft this resolution. And the idea behind the resolution is to focus on what we need for our students. So we're calling upon the governor and the Oregon Legislature to fully fund pre-K through 12th grade education. And that is the intent behind this resolution. And the focus is supposed to be about fully funding. And, you know, and we, we struggle with what we hear every time we're in this boardroom. We hear about, I mean, that, that's what the discussion was about tonight for four and a half hours. And that's just one evening. So we came together and we, we drafted something, again, that focuses on students and education and fully funding education. And that's where the focus of this is. So obviously, I support it.
Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising their hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Not mine, I'm sorry, I'm tired, I voted the wrong way.
You already did it, you already did it.
No. All those voting nay?
Is Chuck still on the phone?
Chuck voted aye.
Chuck voted aye, thank you.
Chuck, Chuck voted aye. Chuck voted aye.
Yeah, the negative vote then is aye, and I'll stand on that by myself.
So it's adopted?
It is adopted.
Thank you.
The majority calls that. And that's what, yes, Chuck, thank you.
All right, so we didn't have anybody sign up for non-agenda items. And I believe we're going to move the rest of the agenda. We'll work with board leadership to move it to the 26th. And with that, I'll turn it over to you to go ahead and adjourn. Reid?